Good evening. The work session of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, and the time is now 6:08 PM. Trustees present are Trustee Hodges, Trustee Correa, Trustee McDaniel, Trustee Adams, Trustee Newhouse, Trustee Jensen, and myself, Trustee Durant. I'd like to ask everyone to please turn off and silence any of your electronic devices at this time. At this time, Trustee Newhouse will begin the meeting by reading the board's equity statement.
Good evening. Thank you, President Durant. The Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, cognitive, physical, or socially emotional, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, Trustee Newhouse. Our next item is superintendent remarks, and so at this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Craig Quair.
Thank you, Madam President, and trustees, and members of the public. Welcome. Here at Spring ISD, every decision we make begins with one shared goal, and that is helping our students thrive. To better serve our campuses, we have realigned central office leadership and resources to be more responsive and connected to each school's connected needs or unique needs. This alignment ensures accelerated improvement and continued progress and improvement for every student, moving with boldness and urgency for every single child. We're excited to introduce several key leaders who embody our theme of "together in culture and together in accountability." Each brings a strong record of dedication, vision, innovation, and school-based improvement in advancing student success. The Division of Academics and Leadership has evolved into two new offices, the Office of Learning and Leadership and the Office of Transformation and School Improvement, to deliver more targeted and high-quality campus support in supporting every single student with their accelerated learning needs. We've also reimagined how we are innovating and approaching our work from a strategic level as well as looking through the lens of our Innovation and Student Success Department. So please join me in welcoming our new Chief Learning Officer. If Dr. Elisa Sapata can please stand up. Our new Chief of Transformation, Dr. Sochi Rodriguez, if you could please rise. Our new Chief of Innovation and Student Support Services, Dr. Michael Love, please rise. Dr. Brandy Brotherton, our Assistant Superintendent of Academics, please rise. We have Ms. V. Tran, who's our Director of School Improvement and Support for the Office of Transformation, and Mr. Dwayne Hughes, our Director of School Improvement and Support for the Office of Learning. These leaders represent our district's commitment to service, speed, and impact, ensuring every school can stay focused on delivering excellence for every single student every single day, embodying our theme of being together in culture and together in accountability. Also, I'd like to take a moment to celebrate a major milestone for Hirsch Elementary, the launch of their new STEM Smart Lab, made possible through a generous $160,000 donation from the Campos Foundation. Yes, we could give a round of applause for that. This innovative space gives students hands-on opportunities to explore robotics, 3D printing, and engineering design, bringing science and creativity to life in the classroom. The Smart Lab is part of a broader effort to open doors for underrepresented and female students in the STEM fields. The Campos Foundation currently serves more than 10,000 students a year across five states through similar labs. Principal Latoya Patterson, the Hirsch staff, and the gifted and talented coordinator Selena Salazar have done incredible work preparing this space and integrating it into daily instruction. For our students, this lab is more than just a classroom. It's a launchpad for imagination, transformation, and innovation. One student described it perfectly, saying, "It helps me create what I'm thinking." Again, I want to thank the Campos Foundation for their partnership and our wonderful Board of Trustees for helping make this vision a reality. Thank you, Board. As a district, we're committed to expanding these kinds of opportunities across all of our campuses, ensuring every student has the tools to explore, create, and lead their futures ahead. And lastly, even though I should be leaving this for the board to champion, but I'm very excited to really celebrate our visionary board because we just held our building bridges. And I want to applaud the board because this is one of the most innovative things that I have ever been witness to, but also to be a part of, and how our board truly gets out in front to immerse themselves with staff and community, really opening up the voices of all so we can continue to lead the work together. It takes a village. So our trustees truly value hearing firsthand from the community, and this dialogue helps us strengthen trust, build understanding, and ensure our decisions reflect the voices of those that we serve. I want to thank our trustees for their continued commitment to transparency and two-way communication and to our families and community partners who took the time to join and share their perspectives. Together, we're continuing to build bridges that connect our schools, families, and community for the success of every single Spring ISD student. Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Quair, for those updates. Our next item on the agenda is Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak to any items on the agenda prior to those items being considered by the board. So Ms. Kenner, do we have anyone signed up tonight for Agenda Participation?
We do not this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Well, our next item is a very exciting opportunity we have this evening. It's a special recognition for three of our board members, and we have a longtime friend of Spring ISD here with us to make this presentation, and that's Dr. Robert Long. And so I'd like to, at this time, turn the podium over to Dr. Long, who's here from the Texas Association of School Boards.
Good evening. President, Trustees, Superintendent, and Spring ISD community. My name is Dr. Robert Long, and I serve as the Division Director for Board Development Services, responsible for the training of 7,000 school boards, trustees across this great state. And it is my honor to join you this night as we actually wrong the right. This didn't happen. When I found out that, you know, as a part of this role with Leadership Tasby is we go around and we celebrate with the community because it is a tremendous undertaking that many people don't really understand in the public, so it's a part of our charge to come. Three of our board members didn't get recognized, so I'm here to recognize Master Trustee Correa, but we're going to also wrong this right because Spring is my home. I am here because of the folks in this room. I've gone to war with LaTracy for many years over there at Thompson trying to keep what Beniki was doing. Beniki Bears. Sochi was my first supervisor down in Fort Bend, so I have a lot of connections in this room. And of course, the wonderful board members that are present. So I'm really excited to have the opportunity to be here and drove in very quickly from Austin to make sure that I get this right. So this evening, we recognize Master Trustee Carmen Correa, proud graduate of Leadership Tasby Class of 2025; Master Trustee Natasha McDaniel, graduate of Leadership Tasby Class of 2024. I had both of them with my class, and we had great times traveling the state together. And then, of course, Master Trustee, Trustee Winford Adams, graduate of Leadership Class of 2020, who had a very interesting class because that happened during COVID, and so they had to make some unique transitions to make that happen. Each of these trustees have earned a prestigious designation of Master Trustee, which is the highest honor conferred by the Texas Association of School Boards. Since the program's inception, there has been almost 1,000 trustees statewide that have achieved this distinction. More than 32 years ago, local school boards like yourselves got together and wanted to form Tasby, which is a nonprofit cooperative design to support other districts, share resources, and strengthen governance in every community. Today, Tasby's 43 member locally elected board members serve and continue to challenge and push everything from legal services to policy and training, advocacy, and government support. Leadership Tasby builds upon that legacy. It is a rigorous, year-long, advanced leadership training program to strengthen trustees' ability to govern effectively on behalf of the 5.5 million Texas public schoolchildren. Over the course of five sessions, now mind you, these folks don't get paid to the community. They don't get paid. They're volunteering their time because they're policymakers so that kids win. They sign up for extra trainings, five sessions, three- to four-day sessions. We actually have Brownsville next week with Leadership Tasby Class of 2026, getting rid of that. But they commit three to five days in region all across the state, learning about good governance and what good governance takes to produce positive outcomes so that kids win. And they do this by visiting what's working in other communities, and they learn a lot of things, right? Like what works in one district will not work in another district because the unique, complex differences between our school districts are so unique and so vast that you need locally elected leaders to really do that work. And so, but they visited districts. So collectively, Trustee McDaniel, Adams, and Correa have participated in Leadership Tasby sessions that covered over 2,500 miles, documented travel with visits to more than 15 school districts that represented communities serving over 250,000 students. From the Panhandle to the Rio Grande Valley, from West Texas to the Gulf Coast, Trustee Correa, Class of 2025, traveled through San Antonio, El Paso, Austin, College Station, Fort Worth, engaging with Fort Sam Houston, Randolph Field ISD, El Paso ISD, San Illy ISD, Hutto, Bryan ISD, College Station, a journey of more than 2,100 miles. Trustee McDaniel visited El Paso, Cantaduel ISD, Santa Gertuitis ISD, Gregory Portland, Kingsville, Katy ISD, Fort Bend, connecting educators and students across the state. And of course, we know Trustee Adams completed his program during the onset of COVID, demonstrating resilience and dedication to leadership and uncertainty. These journeys embody the heart of Leadership Tasby. Trustees who lead by learning collaborate across communities and model courage and humility required to govern effectively so that kids win. At this time, I would like to invite Master Trustee Carmen Correa, Master Trustee Natasha McDaniel, and Master Trustee Winford Adams to the front here so they can receive their Master Trustee diplomas and cords, symbols of their dedication and achievement. And note, even though we did not have cords, whenever Master Trustee McAdams went through, I got him one tonight because that's something that I added when I came aboard this program. I have some stories they can tell you about me. We've been through some things. Then we'll get done. Just because we don't recognize trustees enough, like they get one month, they should have the whole year because they're literally creating the sandbox for you all to play with so that kids win, and that's important. Trustees, Master Trustees, Correa, McDaniel, and Adams, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for saying yes to the work. Thank you for investing your time, energy, and hearts into the craft of governance and for representing Spring ISD and its community with distinction across Texas. Your journeys remind us that student outcomes change only when adult behaviors change, and each of you have modeled the reflection, courage, and leadership that drive that change. On behalf of Tasby's Board Development Services Division and Leadership Tasby Alumni Association, it's my great pleasure to present you as master trustees, and your community should celebrate with you as your collective impact on Texas public education. Audience, please join me in congratulating Master Trustee Carmen Correa, Master Trustee Natasha McDaniel, and Master Trustee Winford Adams, three proud graduates of Leadership Tasby whose service continues to strengthen both Spring ISD and the 5.5 million Texas public schoolchildren. Please give them a round of applause. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Before you guys sit down, can we, Dr. Quair, can you join them and get a picture with the superintendent? And then when they come back to their seats, I have a question for them. So proud of you guys. Actually, I'm so proud of this board. There's a lot of time, effort, and dedication that they put into achieving this recognition as master board members. That's wonderful. I'd like for them, maybe just take a brief minute and share with us one of the highlights that they found in that learning experience that they enjoyed the most. Who wants to go first? This is a curveball. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have run, y'all.
It's okay. I just plan to speak anyway and just say thank you to Dr. Long and to Mr. Jason Birding as well for all of your dedication to our cohort. We were the first cohort when they took over as program directors, and they were building and challenging the status quo. Our group was a very, yes, spirited, a very vocal group, and they challenged us a lot. We challenged them, and we learned a lot. I learned a lot about myself personally as well, in addition to professionally. And so I can't just think off the top of my head of an experience, but I just know that Leadership Tasby is one of the most impactful trainings, professional development experiences that I've had being a board member, so thank you.
I also want to say thank you to Dr. Long and the rest of the entire crew that put up with us for an entire year. And along with what Ms. McDaniel was saying, it's an experience that is just so hard to put into words, and there's no one school, one experience, one location. But if I had to kind of sum it up, it's the smiles. It's the smiles on the kids' faces when there's good governance and good leadership, good education. The kids are just happy. The staff is happy, and it's so uplifting to see that, especially when you're in situations where you're beat down. You know, the state of education today is just so difficult, and so experiencing that was a very uplifting experience. And it's just, yeah, it's so hard to put into words, but it's such a great experience, and I would definitely encourage any future board members who are considering taking the seat to take that next step and consider doing the leadership training because it is so invaluable, and it's so hard to just grasp the importance of it, so.
So I actually want to acknowledge one other master trustee from Spring, which is Captain Donald Davis. He was the first of us to go through this program. With the director was Bill Rutherford for Don and I, and he sort of voluntold me that I needed to do this because Don was very committed to us being the best governance team we could be. And he recognized that the more of us that had gone through this training and experienced what it is to be a high-quality governance team and a school board member, the better off it would be for our students. And so I want to acknowledge Don Davis for his role in that. And if I could speak to, I think the value I got from this was when you all hear me talk about a growth mindset and continuous improvement, seeing examples of that around the state of Texas, communities with very different challenges from us, but still doing it for their kids. It's just why I talked to Natasha and I talked to Carmen about here's a professional development opportunity you should explore because of the benefits, and I encourage everybody on our team. I really believe in professional development, not just for us, but for everybody. And so I think that sums up what this has meant for me.
And I wanted to add one more thing. When we talk about changing adult behaviors, that was the other piece that was great to see, that all of these trustees from very different backgrounds, very different ideologies, very different views of what they think education is supposed to look like, and for everyone to come together with the same common goal. It's wonderful to see that people can change. People can be changed, and there is hope. And so that's a little microcosm of what we could do on a much larger scale at the state level, at the national level. It just takes people willing to work together and finding that common goal, and so just wanted to add that.
Thank you all for sharing some of your experience and just congratulations. I want to thank Dr. Long for coming back. Your roots and your home is Spring ISD. So you have someone else with you tonight. I think she said Jason? He's not here? Okay, all right.
He's actually training a board tonight.
He's training, okay. Well, just thank you for being here. It's good to see you.
I just got me. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And we do have our next board member, I think, kind of waiting in the wings. Voluntold with Trustee Hodges next? So stay tuned. With that, we're going to move on to our next item. We're going to give them an opportunity to make some changes. Why don't we take a five-minute break while they swap that podium out for a table? We'll take a short little break. that podium out for a table? We'll take a short little break, okay? We'll now reconvene tonight's meeting. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Student Support Services, Dr. Michael Love.
Thank you, Madam President, and to our trustees. Uh today we'll be providing a Lone Star Governance Update on um really our college career military readiness, what's our focus on uh Goal Pro- Goal Progress Measure three point two, three point three, and three point five. I've asked um Dr. Gillery, who serves as our Student Data and Compliance Officer, along with Mr. Hayward, who's our CTE Compliance Coordinator, who's stepping in for Ms. Williams, our Director of CTE, to provide the presentation to us tonight. Thank you.
Greetings, Ms. Durant, Dr. Crayor, members of our board and our elite executive leadership team. Uh tonight we want to bring you up to date. And before I begin, I want to first thank all seven of our board members who recently were trained on CCMR. So I think we owe them a round of applause. They were very astute students and asked some great questions, as we would expect. So as you see here, our Lone Star Governance Framework, it really aligns with our mission and one of our major goals is the CCMR Task Force of Spring ISD. As you all know, it speaks to the work that our CCMR Task Force has done. And I do believe we have some CCMR Task Force members in the audience, and I would ask if they stand at this time? Most of them that you see here tonight are our special program directors, who are an avid part of our CCMR work. So as we go through CCMR, our task force was designed so that we can ensure that our students have a very uh profound academic high school career. We want to make sure that they are meeting the standards set forth by the Board of Trustees as well as those from the state, so that we can ensure that upon graduation, they would have a very successful career. As you see here, we have made great gains by twenty-two point gain, and this is our guesstimation as to where we are, due in part to the wo- hard work that has been done by our high schools. Uh our cumulative score that we are guesstimating is seventy-five percentage points. And we are going to take a look at where some of our schools are landing, but this has been a lot of unpacking of data, uh making sure the data that we're displaying in P E M S T S T S is on the state's register and working closely with our high schools. They each have a CCMR team led by CCMR liaison. You can see here how far out in the pack that Westfield High School is compared to their historical years, as well as the Cady, Spring High School. We also showing data for Momentum, CICA, as well as Early College. So we're very excited with the Winchee and uh Early College campuses where they are. And if you look closely, you could see that Winchee actually made gains. So we are not accepting the fact that they are an outstanding high school and they're going to get it done, but we're monitoring their data just as closely. Uh some of our events that have led to the success of our CCMR Task Force team and the work of our district leaders, we've had several events, we've uh definitely had lots of meetings. Last week was our CCMR Task Force meeting. We started unpacking a lot of data, making sure that they're looking closely at the data requirements, um having P E M submitted in the summer, as well as our extended year P E M's fall with dual credit courses, advanced placement courses. All of this pertains to where we are right now. Our weekly monitoring with Ms. Barnes, I want to give her a shout out, she's not here tonight. Um, she is the Post-Secondary Success uh Coordinator that now works on the DMC. She probably gets tired of seeing me call her into my office to get more updates, but we're monitoring the data weekly. We also have created a webpage for CCMR. Uh just today, Ms. Barnes and I met with about fifty high school students, they were all football players in their u- uniforms before practice, talking to them about CCMR. And one little man asked, where do I get more information? So I was, I told him, go to the webpage, and we'll be back with flyers and information. And some of them were in dual credit courses, and we talked to them about being college-ready. So we're very excited about the work that we're doing with the uh College and Career Military Readiness. Uh as you can see, our first um goal here, as we compare the class of twenty twenty-four, which accounted for twenty twenty-five accountability, and the class of twenty twenty-five, where we think we will be is at seventy-five percent. So that twenty-two point gain will allow us to be on track for the percentage of graduates that meet the criteria for by increasing it from sixty-one point four percent in August twenty twenty-four to seventy-seven point two percent by August twenty twenty-nine. Of course, our CCMR Task Force goal is that all of our juniors and seniors at the end of this academic year will be at a CCMR point. So our goal is a hundred percent. We want to knock it out the park. We are doing some close monitoring, looking at our dual credit enrollment, looking at those students to make sure that their pathways align, is why we have Mr. Hayward here. We're also monitoring and just looking at this number. We even have numbers that are greater than this at this point. At the time that our presentation was due, uh we now have almost four hundred students where we are now in Texas College Bridge. So we're closely monitoring uh Spring High School, want to give them an extra set of kudos, because they now have two hundred students who have completed Texas College Bridge in math. So they are definitely leading the path. We closely monitor our A C T registration for our students, despite S A T being that that test that our, most of our students take. Our pathways, I'm gonna let Mr. Hayward talk about our pathways for our CTE, as well as the next growth measure. Mr. Hayward?
Good evening again. Our pathways are doing great. Uh we've been working with Dr. Gillery and her team to make sure that uh we're streamlining the the way our course sequences are set up. So one of the things that we we realize that the state has moved the bar where students now have to be completers. And so for those students to be completers, they have to have three courses and for for four more credits when they graduate to be completed. So what we're doing now, but uh making sure our data workflow is is correct, we were able to look at these kids and see what pathway these kids were. So in the past, kids were just being put, being coded as explorers and participants. Now we got kids now since the dat- the workflow, the data's moving a lot, being trained and on data suite, we can, I can actually look at a lot of data. We can look at that in different ways and now figure out which kids need a certain point. So again, we're at fifty-six percent, so we're we're pretty much on track to to make sure that those kids are going to be completed. That number's going to continuously rise because now we're able to really, the the workflow of data allows us to actually check that data. The next is our I B Cs. Our I B Cs are are, we had eight hundred and twelve uh students that actually receive I B Cs. Our I B C points are up at forty-eight percent. That number actually is actually a little higher because again, we had to look at kids that in the past were coded as explorers and participants. We're doing a lot better, making sure those kids are completing their pathway. The state again, they moved the bar. We no longer have concentrators and completers. Every kid has to be a completer. So we look at those kids, we had kids, so we know we're going to be on track. Those kids were actually receiving I B Cs, but they were coded as explorers and participants. Now, with more kids being coded as completers, that number actually increases beyond the forty-eight percent. I was just telling Dr. Gillery, my real number actually looks more like fifty-one percent of those kids going to be completers.
And just so that you all are aware, the O D S in green is On Data Suite. That's the software that I shared with you guys when you were uh trained, and that's the data source that we are using for today's presentation. So we do feel very confident uh with the number of students that we have right now. We're sitting at almost five hundred students who have tested for T S I A two. Uh again, we're having those conversations. We want to continue to remain on track and having those conversations with students as to why this is so important for them to leave high school and be ready, whether it's a college career that they want, or they're going to just be an outstanding businessperson. So we want them to have a choice. We we have a lot of offerings in Spring ISD, and it's our goal to remain on track because we owe this to our students. And that concludes our update, and we'll take any questions at this time.
Uh Dr. Gillery, you addressed it in your last statement. There were a bunch of acronyms tossed around here. You corrected O D S, that's On Data Suite?
Yes, sir.
Just for, I know what it is, but for everybody else, what is I B C?
Industry-based certifications.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then the other question I had, if you could go to the uh G P M, that acronym is Goal Progress Measures?
Yes, sir.
It was the slide that had um fifty-three percent T E A, seventy-five percent O D S? That's the one. Are those normalized growth goals?
Well, what we're calculating with the seventy-five percent is the actual number of graduates from the class of twenty twenty-five who have a CCMR met status point.
Got you. And so this this twenty twenty-four sixty-five point three, that's what we anticipated is a normalized growth goal? And we exceeded that goal?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to, so in in the spirit of continuous improvement, when we exceed a goal, we should adjust our normalized growth goal as we go. Does that make sense? So the the way this is playing out, where we hit seventy-seven point two percent by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, as we continuously improve, that should go up?
Y- yes, sir. The adjustment will take place at the um as we're looking at our summative um at the end of the year. And then you're exactly right. So if we do land on seventy-five, which is ten percent higher than what our target was, then that normalized target will look exponentially different.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that out loud, so that everybody, when we're talking about our, we have a ten percent normalized growth goal. Um, and I need, I need us to speak in that lexicon, like use that language, so that everybody understands that these goals are not static. That we expect to improve, like you said, exponentially, continuously, um year after year after year.
Absolutely. And and we want everyone speaking in that language, even our kiddos, even the kids, they should understand what their ten percent normalized growth is. But we need, as we all know, exponential growth in the district. And so as we continue to hit that target and move it along, we not only achieve our goals, but we will motivate our kids to celebrate their successes. And that's what we want to see happen. Uh great presentation. Um, Trustee Correa?
Just a quick question on the um the page where we're talking about closely monitoring the A C T.
What's the page number?
Uh twenty-five of one fifty-six in a binder.
Okay.
Uh, yes, the the formula error there. I was just trying to understand, that first column, what does that first column represent? The number of people, uh number of students actually registered?
Yeah, so we we currently have as of right after that, we had, it went, yeah, it was four fifty-eight. And then we monitored how many actually tested on October twenty-second, and how many of them met and passed in each, the math in the L A.
So for Winchee in particular, we had sixty-two registered, but that second column is a total number of.
That we uploaded how many total students in eleventh and twelfth grade per campus who had the opportunity to test?
That's the p- okay, opportunity to test.
Yes, ma'am.
So then why would it be zero, I guess?
They didn't have anyone who registered to test at that time.
Okay, 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 thank you.
They they, Winchee did end up with fifty-six of their students testing. Because this is at as of the time we had to submit the presentation. But we get updates weekly, and I have the updates with me. Yes. So they're ninety-point three-two percent for Winchee High School.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes, um on page seventeen of one fifty-six, the page that has the map on it, um what do these schools represent?
It's just an uh image of schools, like where universities are. It's not all of them. It's just a college representation. Is your college not there?
I didn't see any H B C U's. And so I didn't, uh so it was just stock photo. Okay.
Okay, yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, what are the type of things are we doing to encourage the testing and the kids to test? Like at Winchee where we had zero at that time, um how are we continuing to motivate them?
So we have four post-secondary success college counselors that work with Ms. Barnes.
Okay.
Um, and as Dr. Crayor presented the last board meeting, our CCMR night, we have Military Night coming up next week, um having, we had College Night. So we're constantly encouraging them. And when we attend the campus CCMR meetings, that's one of our questions that we ask. What are you, how, what are you doing to promote? Uh one school, one one afternoon, it was their open house. So I went to all the counselors and I said, okay, I'm looking at your tables, I don't see a CCMR flyer. Okay, Dr. Gillery. So we have assured them that on the webpage, they can download either of the PDFs to ensure that they get the quality information out to the students. But our goal is to have every junior and senior classroom with something on it with CCMR. Uh we even asked the football team today at Westfield High School, what do you feel about if you don't have a CCMR point, you can't be exempt from your final exams next year, next semester? Oh, man, we gotta get that point. So, you know, you gotta, yeah.
That's a good motivator.
We're working on the P R piece, trying to get it, you know, getting to that parent
And are we incorporating parents in that P R piece?
Yes. Our goal is CCMR Task Force, next semester is to include students and parents and members from the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to kind of follow up with what she's saying, the getting the kids to take the test, is the cost a barrier? Because I know at one point, we had, we I think we were paying for them, and then we had decided we were going to cut that from the budget at one point. And so is that?
Some of the schools in the past have paid for their students. Uh the Eco Dis Kids and Amy is there. What's the difference in cost for the A P tests, ninety-six versus twenty-six?
For A P exams, non-premier use lunch students pay ninety dollars, or premier use lunch students pay twenty-six.
Okay. Let me think a little more.
Okay. Yeah, that is something we may want to think about, um, as a governing body, how we can.
Not having paid for it all and don't let, don't let, don't let there be a deterrent. Understood.
So everybody read between the lines.
So everybody read between the lines in her question. All right. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you all. Go ahead.
Um I do wanna also just publicly acknowledge um the entire CCMR committee. Um and also special acknowledgement to Dr. Hillary. Um Dr. Hillary, thank you for stepping out of your box. Um you have always taken on every charge um and have always gone over and beyond. And when we were reimagining what CCMR looks like in Spring ISD, you were the first person that came to. Um and so I want to say thank you. Um because of your leadership, we are moving miles ahead. At an exponentially quick rate. Um and just the data truly reflects the leadership of not only you, but also of our campuses. And our central teams, um and our families that are really pushing hard um into this very, very, very important work. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you. Thank you, Dr. Hillary.
It's also a, a really good example of. An adult behaviors that are changing student outcomes. Like that's an exemplar of it right there. So. Thank you to all the members of the the CCMR Committee Task Force. Um. That's, that's what we need to see. So thank you.
Well, I'm gonna piggyback on that. Thank you and that um I reached out for some training and. Uh Dr. Hillary, she even uh made us a little uh guide, a student guide, a handout, and I went above and beyond. Uh CCMR is a critical part of uh STAR and our testing. But it's also a critical part of ensuring the future of our kids. Um and so this is something that's extremely important uh dear to my heart, and I wanna say thank you and that that whole task force. Uh for your hard work. We have a heavy lift this year, and you all are carrying a big piece of it. So thank you. Uh thank you, Dr. Love, for that presentation. Um for our next item tonight, I'd like to recognize our deputy. Superintendent of Business Services, Anne Westbrook.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Quayar and members of the board. For the first item. I would like to call up Mr. Philip Ellison, who is the Executive Director of Procurement Services. To present the item, which is on page thirty of your binders.
Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Quayar, members of the board. Um. Recently, House Bill thirty-three seventy-two was passed by the legislature, which prohibits school administrators from receiving. Any financial benefit for performing personal services for an entity with which the administrator's employing school district does business. And so in my case, um it's Texas Association of School Business Officials Tasbo. We receive uh services from them. They provide some professional development for us. Um and other, other types of services, memberships and their organization. Uh while the floor of the Senate or the House discussed uh of. Of while the floor discussion of the bill made clear that volunteering and mentoring were not prohibited by the bill. The plain language of House Bill thirty-three seventy-two as passed does not contain any safe harbor when performing these services. As a result, administrators are potentially subject to a ten thousand dollar penalty if they receive a financial benefit. Which could include reimbursement for travel expenses, et cetera, for volunteering for. Uh an entity that does business with a district such as Tasbo. And so you're being asked to sign the secondment agreement. And so if you're like me, I was like, what the heck is a secondment agreement? So Copilot says, a secondment agreement is a legal agreement that structures the temporary transfer of an employee. From their home company to a host organization. So I have been elected to serve on the Board of Tasbo, subject to the approval of this proposed secondment amendment, agreement. The agreement clarifies that the services being performed by the administrator are professional, not personal in nature. The services are being performed at the behest of the district. The arrangement directly accomplishes the legitimate public purpose. And the district retains control over the administrator and the administrator's ability to serve the Tasbo Board. And so um a district administrator providing volunteer services to an outside organization. While the district, while on district time, raises gift of public fund considerations. The Texas Constitution prohibits a school district from using public funds or resources to benefit a private interest. Such uh but such an expenditure or grant may be made, if done so, for the direct accomplishment. Of a legitimate public purpose. The Texas Supreme Court adopted a three-part test to determine whether the grant. Of resources is a constitutional use of public funds. Specifically. The district must ensure that the main purpose of the grant is to accomplish a public purpose, not to benefit private parties. Retain public school control, I'm sorry, public control over the grant to ensure that the public purpose is accomplished. And to protect the public's investment and ensure that the public uh political subdivision receives a return benefit. So, the recitals of the agreement in the proposed uh in the proposed agreement assert. The public purpose served by public's administrators volunteering as Tasbo Board members. Include, but are not limited to, professional development, networking and leadership opportunities that they gain. And then utilize in the district. The agreement allows the district to agree to the time commitment involved. Reserving the district's right to limit the administrator's participation, should it unduly conflict with their district's duties. And finally, the agreement ensures a return benefit for the district by setting forth the administrator's duties as a board member. Including, but certainly not limited to, developing strategic plans and goals that ensure the uh the. The benefit of district's school business professionals as well as those statewide. So, um, the main purpose though is to address compensation. So, um. It states in here, the employee's salary and benefits will continue to be administered by the district, so I'll still work for the district. Um Tasbo will reimburse the employee for certain reasonable expenses incurred in connection with the secondment, such as travel, accommodation. Meals or related expenses arising from my uh performance as a uh under my school. By board member duties. And so that's what we are here for. Do you guys have any questions?
Just to start, um how long is the term?
Um I am president-elect this year, so I will be um in February, I will be become president. And then past president. Uh so that's the kind of transition uh as since I'm an officer. So twenty twenty-eight, February twenty twenty-eight, I'll be completed.
The uh the backup for this references SB five seventy-one. I thought I heard you say it was House Bill thirty-three seventy-two.
Yes.
I was gonna ask the same question, cause SB five seventy-one is about educator misconduct.
Is that just a typo?
I don't think so. I think um. Were you seeing five seventy-one?
It's in the explanation of the item in the board book.
I don't have the explanation in front of me.
Good evening, trustees. Um it is House Bill thirty-three seventy-two, which which addresses um the employment. Of administrators in um with certain governmental, um certain, certain entities.
So that must be a typo.
Well, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. I think. Yes, I was.
Do this before until this SB thirty-three seventy-two came out.
It should be, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Um trustee Correa?
So, so is this contract basically stating that you are truly just a volunteer for Tasbo? And the school district can't reimburse for anything that you're doing with Tasbo? Is that the short version?
Um I am a volunteer with Tasbo, and the school district is allowing me to volunteer with Tasbo. And Tasbo will reimburse me for expenses incurred by volunteering with them.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, any notion of what the time commitment might be like?
Um, we have four school board meetings, um uh Tasbo board meetings a year. Uh we have conferences, but typically I go to those conferences as a, as uh in in my duties. Probably, I don't know, eight hours a month.
You're, I mean, you're, you're sort of wandering into the realm of what we do.
Oh, right, right. I remember all, all the congratulations.
Yeah, it never ends up being that way.
Trust me, it's more than eight hours a month. Where are your meetings?
I'm sorry?
Where are your meetings, you say?
Where the meetings, they vary. Um like we're having one in December. It will be at it um in. You're testing me. Uh in in the Dallas area, and it will be at the site of the next um annual meeting. And so we'll have them there in December at the next site, which varies between Dallas and San Antonio and Houston and Austin. Um and then our summer meeting is in Austin. Um typically, one of our meetings is virtual. Um so we don't have to do the traveling, but it's one day.
I have a question for Ms. Westbrook. Is is this something that we would need to do for anybody else in the district that may have? I don't wanna say a side gig, but any sort of consulting services?
It's actually become something quite large, and so myself, Dr. Ken, uh Ms. Kennimer have been working through. And there's a process that has been put in place for self-reporting. When there are those relationships with outside entities, particularly the ones that the district does business with. So we, we have put a process in place where they're reporting. I think we've had two people that have turned in the information. And so what it does is it comes to the human resources team and they review it. And then we get together with Ms. Kennimer and figure out what the next steps need to be. So it is something new. And we did send out in SISD now, I believe, that just introduced the new bills and the requirements and the reporting. And so apparently, they saw it because we're starting to get the the information into HR.
Yes, the uh the for, it's in a request for an external service contract approval form, and it. Eventually does come to the Board of Trustees uh for approval. And so there is very uh strict requirements. That House Bill thirty-three seventy-two put in place for who can request those types of uh position, uh those types of arrangements. Uh administrators who are listed as assistant superintendents and above are not eligible. To uh perform these types of arrangements. And so in our structure, uh anyone who's an assistant superintendent or an officer or a chief. Uh or the superintendent uh cannot enter into one of these arrangements. And so we push it out like Ms. Westbrook said, uh through SISD now. Uh we also give new administrators a copy of uh the the packet upon their uh orientation. And so that everyone is aware.
Is Tessa an exception to that then?
There, there are, aren't any exceptions. And so what 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 it talks about is that it's, the first prohibition is that. Administrators cannot work for any vendor that conducts or solicits business with the district. That's the first criteria. And then the second criteria, where it allows an exception, uh if it's um. If they don't, if it's an education business that provides curriculum or instructional services or administrative services that does not conduct business with the district. Or another school district or open enrollment charter or education service center. Administrators below the level of admini- uh assistant superintendent are able to apply. We review. But the the first test is, is this a business that conducts or solicits business with the district? And that, that is, that, that's a tough test. And so that's what we're working through now with our first two applications. Um as we're trying to determine, we work with procurement, we work with legal. Uh to determine, is this one that can be brought forward to the board?
So the reason that I was asking, I was thinking. Along the lines of our, our bonds and the, the number of vendors that we have. And while I appreciate the self-reporting piece, would there be any reason for us to? Go a little bit further just to make, not, I'm not saying that there's any impropriety going on. But with the regulations that are happening, all the new legislative laws, would there be any reason for us to dig into that a little bit deeper? Just to make sure that just from an optics perspective, we don't have anybody that could get us, you know, run afoul of this legislation?
And the way the law is structured, it places it on the employee. Because the civil penalty, the ten thousand dollar penalty is not on the district. It is on the. Employee, the person themselves. So if they don't report and they don't receive approval to do this, or they weren't eligible to do this. The penalty is on them.
And Tasbo and their efforts to protect the volunteers that are, that are volunteering for the organization have been proact, being very proactive and getting in front of this. And that's why we're here.
Right. And that's just a question or idea. I don't, I'm at the leap pleasure of the board, but.
One, one point clearly, like though this does not affect adjunct work. And so we know we do have a lot of people who perform adjunct work with universities or with our community colleges. This is not in. Uh if affect adjunct work.
We do have a lot of people that are consulting, you know, so we have to, um.
A lot of my colleagues are members of professional organizations and um and so the, the, we've got to take a look at that.
But we have informed all administrators that they are not allowed to perform these duties. With these outside entities without approval first.
We've got the awareness out there, so.
And so, and so the board, um I'm sorry, the uh my colleagues on the Tasbo Board. Um have gone through their school districts to get their uh secondment amendment signed. Of the twelve of us, three of us have not yet, but um College Station ISD, Royce City ISD, Dripping Springs ISD, Katy ISD. Amarillo, Plano and Keller are uh the districts of my colleagues, and they've already finished their secondment um agreements and gotten those submitted. So there's just the three of us left.
Okay. Is there a timeline on this? This would basically go on consent for Tuesday. That's, is that sufficient?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. So this item will go on consent for uh next Tuesday's board meeting. Ms. Westbrook, you can continue.
Thank you. The next item we have is on page thirty-five, and this is related to the district's optimization work. So as we know, the optimization work has been ongoing for the last several months and was under Dr. Parasol's leadership prior to his departure. He presented an update to the board at the September board meeting, and during that board meeting, it was determined towards the end of the presentation. That it would be a good time for us to have a third party come in and review the work that the district had done thus far. Provide some recommendations and some guidance as we move forward to ultimately bringing forward a recommendation to the community. Later this year. And so at that time, we sought out proposals. We received a total of three proposals. And through the work with the senior leadership team, we selected Civic Solutions Group, who's referred to as CSG. Because they had the most experience across the United States, but also here close to home as well. They've done. Work with some of our neighboring districts. And through CH Local, the updated version of CH Local. The cost of this proposal is actually below the one hundred thousand dollar threshold. And so through CH Local, we were able to enter into the engagement with CHG with our superintendent's signature on the proposal. However, as always, in full transparency to both the Board of Trustees and the community. We're bringing this item and this recommended vendor forward to the board this evening for discussion and consideration. To provide guidance to Spring ISD as we continue and complete the optimization work.
And just reminding the board, back in September, this was something that I actually broached with the board. That we were at a place where we needed to ensure um that our recommendations internally. Um absolutely were the most optimal. Um and being able to have a experienced. Um uh third party actually come in and thoroughly vet our work. Um and going through that process, I was extremely impressed.
um, just with, um, just how quickly CSG was able to work with us to ensure that, um, our rollout of our optimization plan indeed, um, is the most optimal, um, for kids in our community.
Did I miss that? Was, was that the meeting that I missed? Cause I'm not recalling.
No, I don't think you missed that one. You missed the last meeting we had. Which was the actual board meeting, I think this was a work session.
Um, can you share what it was, just a bit more about what it was with Civic Solutions Group that, um, makes them stand out? One of my questions is about their capacity, um, looking at the two different options. Just thinking of back, thinking back to some of, uh, our previous work. Um, I don't wanna name specific vendors, but we've had experiences where we, um, chose phase one and not necessarily phase two, et cetera. Um, making sure they have the capacity to support us.
Um, yeah, the beautiful thing about having them come in on the backend is a lot of the legwork has already been done. Um, we've had a total of twenty-one meetings spanning to the, to the last part of February. So, we have engaged the community, um, from, from the spring all the way through fall. Um, and typically to your point, if we would have brought them on early on, they would have been the one helping host these sessions. Um, so bringing them, bringing them in on the backend is really having them comb through our recommendations with a fine-tooth comb, uh, making sure that it's, um, it's vetted, um, with a targeted focus, um, and also helping us with what comes after, um, which is strategic communication, um, and also how to engage our families after we make such an announcement public. Um, and helping us organize strategically, um, town halls, um, activity-based sessions for the public, um, how to really help us curate around a strategic vision around especially communication. Um, so now it's a, it's a very different capacity, so they do have that capacity for sure, um, because it is in a, it, it's not in a heightened role as it would have been if they would have helped us from the onset.
Trustee Adams?
So, I, I feel like this, I'm uncomfortable with the way we're doing this from a CH Local standpoint. Um, cause I feel like that's what happened with ABL. Um, we, we, the, the, the backup that I see shows that the phase one of this has a certain amount that is below the CH Local threshold, and then the second phase, which is presented as optional, is a much larger amount. Um, and I'm uncomfortable with the way this feels like it's structured to evade CH Local.
It is optional, and so we requested the work that Dr. Quayar just mentioned, and that's what we were quoted for, which is well below, it's below fifty thousand. The vendor took it upon themselves to propose a second phase that is optional, and so that's, that's not what we sought, but that's what was provided to us. And that would be the option of the district if we wanted to move to phase two, but we absolutely could not and would not move to phase two without that having to come to the board because it would exceed the superintendent's authority through policy.
Right, but it's sort, sort of, what it feels like is we're getting sort of a teaser, like a taste of it. So, with, with the ABL contract in particular, I feel like, um, we were given these options to do this, right? And like, it, it gave us this great starting point, but then, like, to really get the full value of ABL, you really needed the part that they were talking about as optional. Um, and so we didn't get really what we thought we were getting, and so I wanna be sure that this second op- part of this isn't the part that's essential, that like, we're getting this teaser, we're given, being, given this appetizer, this part that's under fifty thousand dollars, right? And like, that's great, but I also feel like Dr. Parasol did a bunch of that work. Um, but the real value add is the piece that's much more expensive, that is over the CH Local amount. Um, and so that's, that's a concern I have with this, and I don't wanna speak for the entire board.
That's exactly what, I didn't wanna name the vendor, but that's exactly what I was speaking to with the two phases. Um, and so, Dr. Quayar, if you wanna expound.
I, I, I only contracted with them for the first phase. I think phase two is one hundred percent optional, uh, was not over, I was not future-looking into twenty-twenty-six. I think they put it in there to let us know that that option is there in the event that we do want to be able to engage with someone that can help us provide, uh, you know, the last leg to, um, us actualizing what it is that we are moving forward with optimization, but in all transparency, I, I just wanted them to do the work that we contracted them to do through December.
My recol- my recollection, um, of when the representative was here was that he laid out a timeframe for how long it would take to do the work, and I, I think the timeframe he laid out exceeds what they're offering in phase one. That's why I'm sort of in my mind putting the optional part in quotations. Um, because it feels like they, they stopped doing the work right when it's most important, so I, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm open to hearing why that's not the case, but like, that's a thing that, but, I took a lot of notes on this because that bothered me when I initially saw it.
I could, I know my concern was, I know we had the conversation in September, but I was expecting, um, it to come back to the body with options and opportunities and not move forward like we did, so, um, exactly to get the different phases, um. So my concern was around, I don't know if we ultimate, I just wanna make sure we're transparent. We made a vote not to use outside vendor, that we were gonna do it ourselves. If that's changed, let's make sure that we're transparent and that we're all in agreement with that's what we're doing as we move forward. In addition to that, we have some very valid points around the different options, and then just how much of it do we really need, uh, to continue to make sure we're successful in this project? I'm sorry, Trustee Hodges, I didn't notice your light till now.
So, um, in looking at the proposal, the description, and the deliverables, um, and know that I'm, I'm speaking from a consultant standpoint and as someone who's done civic engagement work, uh, for about fifteen, twenty years now, and I'm only twenty-three. Um, so, I'm looking at these deliverables and I, how do I say this without everybody piercing my head? I just feel, looking at the deliverables, I, I don't know why this is not work that can be done internally. What, what is the, I mean, cause we're talking about uh, creating talking, I don't, in looking at the deliverables, not going line by line, to me, this is no different than, uh, for example, what we do as a board with table talks or building bridges. They're, they're sitting down with the community, getting feedback, they're developing talking points, which our communications team does that for us. I, I, before we, um, pay for something like this, given our current, uh, financial situation, I'd like to think about how we may be able to do this work, uh, internally, I'm, I keep looking at the, um, deliverables and I, I just don't see anything in here that, given the level of, um, the, the capacity that we have in-house to do something like this, I, I don't know, what, what's your, I guess, what I'm asking is, why are we going outside to do this work?
Continue with your question, Kelly, are we on the same page here? What is it that they are doing that we cannot do?
Correct, thank you.
Is what we wanna know.
Yeah.
Well, I can speak openly about that, you, and I, and I do appreciate the sentiment from the board about, we have very talented, very talented people around this table to do a lot of this work. But I will say that we are not experts in this work, because we're, this will be the first time that we're engaging in such an optimization in spring history, and we wanna make sure that we get it right. And what I mean by not experts in this work is, this is my third time going through such a process, and each time, we've always relied on the experiential advice and guidance, um, from a third party that does this work, um, all the time. And I wanna make sure too, which is, and also just my job is to make sure that we're very, very prudent and that the plan that we do offer to the public absolutely has been vetted very thoroughly, um, through an, through an expert's eyes, um, who also has experience in doing this in a myriad of ways. Communication, um, uh, Trustee Hodges, that's a big one, that's a big one for me too. Um, but we're, now we're also thinking about strategic tactical and crisis communication as well. Um, that's a strength that we still have to build internally. Uh, we know, um, it's, you know, Ms. Cobb and I and Dr. Harris were talking about bringing in also, um, someone that can start to build our strength in that arena, um, because we do have a, a new team, we have a young team. Um, so when we think about communication and how we do it very, we do it in a very tactical and strategic way, I think that's extremely important, because we wanna make sure that we're not making any missteps, especially to our public. Um, they, so, and then also with the third party, is they bring a repository of so many tools and information from all their experience in doing this work, especially around the state. Um, Aldine, Flugerville, um, San Antonio, there's a lot that they bring from those experiences um, that we're also able to learn through, and we're also able to po- potentially replicate to help prevent any fault through this process. Um, this is a very important process, I know the board shares that same sentiment. Um, and as a superintendent, I just wanna make sure that we absolutely get it right, um, and hence the reason why my recommendation.
If, if I may respond directly to Ms. Hod- Trustee Hodges' question, originally, when we brought this forward well over a year ago, it was before we began the work that we, we were requesting, that we worked with the third party, and it's because we were at a system of great schools training, I believe it was, when we saw the San Antonio ISD superintendent present the rightsizing optimization work that they had done, and they had done it alongside this particular vendor. And so we knew we were about to embark on that same work, so we brought forward to the board to work directly with this vendor, and we're told at that time that we needed to do that work ourselves. And so, we did do the work ourselves. That is the entire, that binder that was presented to you all with the multiple recommendations, with multiple iterations of the optimization work, that was one hundred percent created by Spring ISD senior leadership team and some of the team members within our teams as well, so we did do the work ourselves. When Dr. Parasol presented it at the September board meeting, and I went back just to make sure that I had my memory correct and watched the video from the September board meeting. We were asked at that time, based on the presentation that Dr. Parasol did, that this may be a great time to bring someone in, even though originally, we weren't wanting to bring someone in. This may be a good time now to bring someone in to review the work that the leadership team has done, provide some guidance and provide some recommendations. So we moved forward and sought out those quotes from companies based on our board telling us during that presentation that now was a good time for us to have someone to look over our work. So I wanted to be very clear and answer that question. We did do the work, we were prepared to do the work, and everything that was shared with you up until this point right now is the work of the senior leadership team that was provided, all of those options in those binders was our work. And I do think we are a very capable team, I think if you tell us not to do it this time, we're gonna go out and get it done and bring it back to the board. But we, we sought this company, not this company, but we sought a company based on the response that we received at the September board meeting, and, and I do, I did go back and watch the video to make sure that I didn't misunderstand the guidance and the ask of senior leadership.
Okay, um, thank you Deputy Superintendent Westbrooks for bringing that to our attention, and I appreciate that, and that's, um, so with that being said, I, I just, I wanna push back a li- little bit. Um, Dr. Quayar, when you said, um, we're not the experts, and I'm, I'm a strong believer that, that we should be, because this is our community, and it has just been my experience as a consultant doing this work, that when we, when, when I'm, I'm hired to go into a specific community to do certain work, I have to rely heavily on that organization to assist me. And I often tell the, some of the small nonprofits that I work with, you all can do this work, I'll just, you know, give you a blueprint for X amount of dollars and you all do the work. I just feel that, um, if we're capable of doing the work, and I, I don't remember the September meeting, I, I can't remember what happened yesterday, but, um, so, I just, given my experience in this work, I, I would be comfortable with the district doing the work, but again, we're a body. Uh, and so if we decide to move forward with this organization, uh, to do the work, that's fine, I just feel that we're a highly capable organization, and we have, um, folks here that are more than, uh, capable of, um, of doing the work. That's it.
So I just wanna be clear, Ms. Westbrooks, so this, this phase one figure, that is the follow-up to the work that you all did, that's what that is.
That's correct, because originally, the price that we brought forward for them to do the full amount was more than double the amount that's listed there. It's much cheaper because we have done the work, and they're coming in and reviewing what we've done and providing some guidance and recommendations based on the work that we've already done. So that's why that cost is less than half of the original cost that we brought forward about a year ago.
Can I jump real quick, just to add to that, we often talk about per student cost, about, I just did about thirty-three thousand. It comes out to about six dollars per student, so, just to add that to the puzzle.
Again, the, the thing that was making me uncomfortable was, again, like, I was sort of reliving the ABL experience, and I was like, no, we're not doing that again.
Yeah, and I literally wrote the same thing.
Doesn't seem like this, that's what this is, so, okay.
I do remember you saying that, I do remember us talking about that in September. Um, but I, I am also the outlier, because I have been saying even to your predecessor, we needed to bring somebody in to do this. Um, we have knowledgeable people, we have talent in education, we don't have knowledge in school closures and optimizing and consolidation and those kinda things, and so, I just wanna put that out there, I, I have been a proponent from the beginning, I know I've shared that with some of my colleagues as well, and even with our previous superintendent. Um, I'm not saying this is the company necessarily, but I do feel like we need to bring that expertise in to make sure that whatever we do, whatever we've done up to this point, and whatever we continue to do, is gonna be right for the community because this is a very difficult task, um, and we do need to make sure that we get it right, so.
I guess the question is still lingering for me. Are we looking at doing both of these phases? Because we don't wanna repeat of what happened before.
The second phase is the finance, transportation, and human resources portion of it. I believe Dr. King and I are more than capable of going into the next phase, we do leveling all the time, we, we, we do hard things all the time, I think we're, we're capable of doing that part of it more so maybe than we were capable of developing the recommendations that are coming forward to you. So it's not our proposal right now to move forward with phase two. This was just an additional proposal that was listed and brought to us as optional.
Any other questions? Okay, what's, what's, what's the actual ask here?
Being as though we have our optimization meeting on Thursday evening, we would ask the board, if possible, if approval is, is necessary. If possible, if approval is, is necessary to, to give us that decision this evening. I'm looking at Ms. Kennimer to see if, if a approval is, if a vote is required.
If a vote is required on this prior to Thursday?
Or at all.
Was the Thursday work part of phase one or phase two?
Vote on this, I think. You're asking if we can vote on this tonight?
Yes ma'am.
I think we can. Um, I think we voted not to do it and I don't think we should move forward without a vote. Regardless to the cost, I think we should.
So to clarify, the votes phase one and phase two. What's the recommendation? Been entered, right? The contract has already been entered. We've already engaged the vendor for phase one. You don't need the board vote for phase one is what I'm saying, based on the.
So this was for awareness?
No, fate, if you wanted to move into phase two, it would require board approval because you would be exceeding the superintendent's spending authority.
Right, but we already said.
So it really shouldn't have moved forward without a board approval, whether it was two dollars or a hundred and two thousand dollars. Still need governance approval to move forward. CH local applies to, we approve a budget. By the board and then you all make what's happening on that budget throughout the year. They don't have to bring every little single thing back to us if it's under a hundred thousand dollars now. But if we have specifically voted no not to do something, that to me, that's a whole different can of worms. However, at this point and, and for the sake of time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move forward with phase one.
Madam President, I move that the board, uh, move forward with phase one of the contract for CSG.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee McDaniel to move forward with phase one of CSG. Is there any further discussion on it?
Um, I'm reasonably comfortable with just phase one.
Okay.
Of this, um, like I said, my, my real reticence was around looking at this like we were gonna be trapped into. Doing a, a much bigger number later on. Um, I'm, I'm fine with, um, professionals checking our work. Um, and looking for opportunities for continuous improvement. I'm good with that.
Okay, hearing nothing else, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries five to two. Ms. Westbrooks, you can continue.
Mr. King.
Hold on, we have a question.
Can I make a request? Can we get just a more detailed breakdown of the services that they, they're going to provide? Cause in here it's kind of a high level. Maybe that might provide some greater comfort on exactly what they're gonna do. Thank you.
Our next item is related to Spring ISD self-funded medical plan. And so we've had quite a few discussions regarding the. The operations of the self-funded medical plan since we began in twenty twenty-one. And Dr. King actually also puts the monthly financial report of the operations of the self-funded. Plan in the weekly board update. And so we've been sharing that information and every year when we bring forward the financial report, we discuss. How, um, the plan has operated. And so this evening, I just want to, first of all, just kind of take us back in history and bring us forward to where we are right now. Prior to going self-funded, we had been with TRS Active Care, uh, the state's plan since two thousand and eleven. And we had seen the cost rise and our employees were complaining about the premium, complaining about the cost of healthcare. And so as a district of innovation, Spring ISD and several districts across the state began offering. An alternative self-funded plan alongside TRS Active Care. On September first, twenty twenty-one was day one of Spring ISD offering an alternative plan alongside the TRS. I'm sorry. Alongside the TRS Active Care Plan. And so on December sixth, twenty twenty-one, one of the primary features of being self-funded. Was our ability to open our first wellness clinic. And so going into the arena of being self-funded was twofold. One is we wanted to stabilize the premium cost for our employees. And ultimately, our goal was to lower the premium cost for our employees. But we also wanted to offer them some low cost or no cost healthcare options that would make. Their access to healthcare better and cheaper for our employees. And so it was an overall wellness initiative. To offer some better medical insurance to our employees. On December sixth, we opened our first wellness clinic over on Cypress Station. And on September first of twenty twenty-two, we opened our second wellness clinic at twenty-one, three oh one Kirkendall. So as districts were beginning to offer these alternative plans alongside TRS Active Care as a component of being districts of innovation. The state's plan was seeing districts pulling some of their members out of the state's plan. Because as you were offering that alternative plan, you had some of the members that would go to the district's alternative plan. Some of the members were staying with TRS Active Care. And so legislation came forward that was to halt districts from offering. The alternative plan alongside the TRS Active Care Plan and it forced us to choose. We were at a time where we had just opened our clinics and we were fairly new. With, uh, the self-funded plan. And so we had a couple of vendors that came out and did a presentation. And showed us how our premiums that we were paying into TRS Active Care prior to going self-funded compared to our claims. We had a net surplus at the time and even with the administrative costs that would have come out of that surplus. We still should have broken even or maybe had a small, um, upside down or small, uh, deficit at best. So we made the choice, because Senate Bill fourteen forty-four forced us to make a choice. We made the choice to go ahead and move forward with being a hundred percent self-funded. And so since September first of twenty twenty-two, we've only been able to offer the one plan and that's our district's self-funded plan. The current plan that we have right now is through Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have a third-party administrator who's Gallagher that we were able to access through a TASB cooperative. The plan year runs September first through August thirty-first. The current plan year, which is September first of twenty twenty-four, that ended on August thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Had an estimated deficit of twelve point four million dollars. We have about twenty-eight hundred employees that have elected to be on the district's medical plan. And that's dropped. We started off with about three thousand two hundred employees. And we dropped to three thousand and now we're at twenty-eight hundred that are, that are participating in the medical plan. About seventy-six percent of those employees are on employee-only coverage. They're just having coverage for themselves. Their family members, spouses are on another plan. Of that's, of those employees that are on the district's plan, over fifty percent of them choose the, the middle plan, which is an HMO plan. And it's not, it's not the cheapest, it's not the most expensive, it's, it's the middle plan. And as we have continued to see losses and we have had losses and I'll show you those losses in just a moment, each and every year. Those losses have been absorbed from the district's fund balance. And I've oftentimes, sitting in the seat, have said that we've had catastrophic losses. They've been catastrophic every year. And I continuously use that word because that's what it has been. So the first year that we offered the plan alongside the, the TRS plan, we saw a loss of three point seven million. The following year, the first year that we were fully self-funded, we had a loss of eleven point five billion. In twenty-three, twenty-four, last year, the last full year that we had had. We had a loss of sixteen point two million dollars and that's the year when we said, okay, we have to do something different. And so we changed our third-party administrator. And in this immediate past year, we had a loss of eleven, eleven point five million. So I want to explain the difference in this number versus the twelve point four million dollars that I listed here as a, the estimated deficit. We are fiscal year in June thirtieth. So our fiscal year runs July first through June thirtieth. But the plan year runs September first through August thirty-first. So that's the difference in those numbers. So I wanted to just clarify that. So over the time that we have been self-funded. Even though we've seen the losses each year, the grand total is forty-three million dollars that the district has absorbed through our fund balance. Because the plan has run at a deficit. And so our employees had access to two free clinics. Where we advertised it continuously that it was zero cost. You could go and get your wellness visits, you can go for sick visits. Everyone loved Dr. Brady over at the Cypress Station location. However, not enough people loved going to those locations because the clinics were terribly underutilized. And that is what led to some of, or the vast majority of the deficits that we saw in our plan. Because we were not able to, to leverage the real benefit of those clinics. And so we, we closed one clinic and that didn't make enough of a difference. So then ultimately we ended up closing both of the clinics.
And so just to give you some data to what Chief Russ, I mean Deputy Superintendent Westbrooks is, is saying. Our clinics were seeing below seventy percent utilization on a daily basis. And so clinic staff on a good, you know, a good day was seventy percent staff, seventy percent with appointments being filled. That was on a good day. Most days fell below that.
Thank you. So through some advocacy on our own behalf and other districts across the state of Texas that were dealing with this self-funded. These self-funded losses because we were not alone. And so I, I can speak personally, I wrote letters to. To representatives across the state of Texas and said, help, we are, we cannot get back into TRS Active Care. Because Senate Bill fourteen forty-four said that once you opted out, you had to stay out for five years. It was quite punitive in my own personal opinion. And so we worked side by side with Senator Cook and we got a Senate bill written in this last, the eighty-ninth legislative session. Our Senate bill ultimately was not the one that crossed the finish line, but it had a sister house bill. That was House Bill thirty-one twenty-six that was just about identical to the Senate bill that we helped get. Um, on pa- or not get passed, but we helped get offered up. And so House Bill thirty-one twenty-six did pass. And so it gives school districts such as Spring ISD who opted out as a result of Senate Bill fourteen forty-four. The opportunity to rejoin TRS, um, by giving a written notice of intent to rejoin. By December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And so if we are able to seek the board's approval. We would be able to rejoin one year earlier. And so I know one year earlier doesn't sound like a lot. But when you're looking at losing eleven point five million dollars, one year is a lot. It's, it's an opportunity to save a considerable amount of money. And so the participation would be for the plan year that begins September first of twenty twenty-six. So it'd be the twenty-six, twenty-seven plan year. There is a bit of a caveat to the rejoining. There is a risk stabilization fee. It's a one-time fee, that first year that you come back and you rejoin. And this is because. Which was TRS's concern at the beginning, which is why Senate Bill fourteen forty-four came along. If districts are coming in and coming out of the plan, then it does make it harder for them to know what their premiums need to be and, and how to. To forecast their cost. And so that makes everyone's premiums that are in the plan go up. Because they're trying to mitigate the risk of having these large districts such as ourselves come back into the plan. So the risk, as, the risk stabilization fee is assessed through a markup on the premium. And it'll be anywhere from ten percent to forty percent. And so it's ten percent to forty percent on the total premium cost. And of course, we split the premium, the district pays a portion and the employee pays a portion. But the premium is calculated on the total cost. And so I wanted to be very clear that this was Ann's calculation. Because there's no calculation that is available for us right now. But I did get on a call with the representatives at TRS to, to validate my thinking process. And so the way the calculation of the estimated risk stabilization fee is done. Is we're looking at the total cost of the premiums in. The Houston area because TRS Active Care now has regional rates. And so we're in that region for Houston rate. So if we look at the premium cost for this year, twenty-five, twenty-six. The esca- we're, we're putting an escalator of ten percent on there. Because right now, the state of Texas has a cap that in the aggregate, they cannot raise their premiums more than ten percent. So we're taking the current twenty-five, twenty-six years premiums, multiplying by ten percent since that's the cap. But just for additional context, over the last two years, the increase in the premium in Houston has been seven point five percent. So the ten percent gives us a bit of a cushion. So we're taking the twenty-five, twenty-six premium. Escalating it by ten percent and then taking ten percent on top of that. Up to forty percent. So ten percent would be a cost of two point five million dollars. Forty percent would be just below, uh, ten million dollars at nine point eight. What TRS has said to us is that it's highly unlikely that you will receive the forty percent risk premium. We like to plan for the worst and hope for the best. So if we're planning for nine point eight million and ends up being five million. We're still six million dollars to the good compared to where we've been landing with our, with our plans. So similar to when Senate Bill fourteen forty-four came into play. We would not have had enough data to really make the best, because we want all twelve months, we want all the information. We didn't have all of the information when we made the decision to move forward before. Because Senate Bill fourteen forty-four said you had to tell us by December thirty-first, even though we didn't have enough data really at that time. This is similar. We have to make a decision by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. But we won't know what our actual risk stabilization fee will be until April or May. But I've been told April. So that's why stress ends calculation. And so the thought process is, we want to put it out there. The, what we think the most the cost will be and then. We just, we, we wait and we find out what it would be. But based on my calculation and based on the discussions that I've had with the TRS Active Care personnel. I feel as though we're on the conservative end of the calculation. Okay, so I've said a lot, so I want to pause for just a moment before I move to the ask.
So just for clarification, the. The one-time risk stabilization fee will be added to the premium?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and do we pay the full premium or do we make payments?
We as the school district could make that decision whether or not we would pay the full, whatever the premium is, or if we would share that with our employees. And so throughout the time that we've been self-funded, we have pretty much absorbed the losses. And we've minimized the increases to the employees. We've actually kept our percentage increases. Equal to the percentage increases that TRS went up. So we would be able to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
So kind of along those lines, what, um, so for our first year, we would still be looking kind of like we have the last. Four years, right? Because assuming the worst and we're at the nine point eight million dollar payment. So it'd still be kind of a loss, right?
It would still be a loss. It would be less than what we've seen over the last several years. But we would know what the amount is. The thing about being self-funded is you're vulnerable. Because if we have a catastrophic event with an employee that has a catastrophic health issue. All bets are off. And so this number, we would know what that number is and we, it wouldn't change. So that's the difference. You would have the certainty, but yes, i- it is another hit. But it looks as though it would be a bit less than what we've been spending.
So it would be a controlled, a controlled loss in a way. And we wouldn't really see the benefits until probably the twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're back to normal, where we're only paying the regular premium.
Okay.
Trustee Adams?
I feel like we're playing three-card money with the state. We keep picking the wrong card too. So they passed this bill. A bunch of states who got out of the door the last time around are gonna get back in the door. And I I just have a a really like sick feeling in my stomach that that's the wrong move. Um, that we should stay outside. Um, and so I'm just, I'm struggling with that right now.
I I'll say, normally I have to recuse myself on these conversations, but um I retired in December. I agree with Ms. Westbrook's calculations and that is, it's probably not likely we're gonna get hit with the forty percent. I think it'll be more somewhere in the middle. And the reason they do that is part of their management cost is for exactly what happened to us. They don't know what their risk is gonna be around catastrophic cases. Because of our history of catastrophic cases. It's gonna be more than the ten, definitely. I don't know if we'll hit forty. But it's gonna be up there. They're gonna look at our claims and our history and see what kind of risk we are. Looking at our history, we're a big risk. So it's gonna be, in my opinion. Higher, higher up. It won't be the forty, but it's gonna be more. Uh, what I will say, when you're looking at the population of an organization. And you're looking at ed- educators who tend to retire out, you've got a lot of aging. Older members in 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 our staffing. Um, we're gonna continue to see high-risk and catastrophic cases because of the nature of um. Our employees and who we have and the longevity. In a lot of industries today, you know, in in our times when I was coming up, longevity was key. People stayed on jobs twenty and thirty years. That just doesn't happen anymore, except in education. And so that makes our risk higher. So in my opinion. We need to stay in. We don't need a self-funded plan, is what I'm trying to say. Um, we do not, we're we're at greater risk in going with the self-funded plan. And if we can get back in, we should get back in.
And just to, it was a supplement with President Durant said. Our top twenty claimants under our plan represent thirty-three percent of our plan cost. So twenty people represent thirty-three percent of our plan cost. And so we are a high risk.
And I just want to add. Up here, we don't know who those twenty people are. I was going back and looking at some of past bor- uh board meetings. And I want to make sure that people understand that we don't know who those are necessarily.
Oh HIPAA still applies.
Just some of the, I I, because I was listening to some past board meetings and the way that we were talking, it almost implied. You could think that we know the who those people are and I think that's, I know, we don't, we don't, but I just, right, right, but I I think. That was part of the reason why there was low utilization of a self-funded plan. I've worked at jobs where we had self-funded plans and there was always that concern. It's like, well, who knows what my case history is or my health history and so. I just wanted to make that clear that we don't know who those people are.
I'm actually kind of glad you said that because that may be part of the reason why we didn't see. Uh, the high utilization of those clinics. Because people are always leery of clinics and whether or not the employer can see their medical history. So I think people will tend to shy away from uh clinics that are operated by their employer. And so it's good to say that HIPAA does apply. We don't know, the district doesn't know who those catastrophic cases are. But what you're seeing a lot in corporate America right now is when people start getting older, all of a sudden, they're getting laid off. And they're making all these changes and a lot of it is they cost the company more. You know, and in education, we we keep them till they're here, you know, till they retire out. And so we're a greater, we're a higher risk business from a medical perspective. And so self-funding is not the best way to go.
Yes, hindsight's twenty-twenty. I wish we had considered that.
I wanted to say it, I couldn't. I worked in healthcare thirty years, but I retired, so I can weigh in now.
One thing no one foresaw coming when we, I think, even though I wasn't here, but. The state stabilized TRS after districts left. It was not attractive. It it was not an attractive plan. There were high complaints. In my prior district and in serving in this role in another district, there were high complaints with TRS plan, so. Districts leaving got the state's attention that you have to do something with this plan and they came in and stabilized it, but we were on the outside and. We had picked the wrong card.
Thank you so much for sharing that, Dr. King. And even in the eighty-ninth legislative session, when you heard me earlier say that there's a cap of ten percent. The cap is is there because it's funded through, there was money that was provided to the plan. To ensure that it does not go above a ten percent premium increase on any given year. So that is a very critical point. Thank you for adding that.
And Dr. King, thank you for talking about whether the teachers want or the employees want the TRS plan. Because that was what I was going to ask is uh do the employees prefer one plan or another? But it sounds like if TRS is different now, they may be very happy with that.
Do we really, do we know? From our experience, employees want lower premiums. I don't, they haven't said we want TRS active care, we want whatever. They say we want lower premiums. And and for it to cost less when they go to the doctor. That's that's what we continuously hear.
I think unfortunately, uh, when you look back on the. Reasons why we didn't have employees attending our self-funded fitness clinics. I think of a lot of it has to do with the location of the clinics. Uh, the first one being in Cypress Station. We know Cypress Station is a number one crime area in Houston. And you will have employees who will not feel comfortable unfortunately with visiting in the Cypress Station area. Kirkendall is not far from Cypress Station there. So uh I could understand why a lot of our employees, possibly if we had had one. On the opposite side of forty-five, it might have made a difference to us. But I think the locations have a lot to do with employees not utilizing our clinics. So this would be good for them to have the option of attending where they would like to attend.
Okay, so you were gonna get to your ask.
We would have to, first of all, it does, it does require a board vote because we have to submit the board minutes. That gave us the ability to enter back into TRS active care. Now, Dr. Quayar can actually sign the form. But it does require proof that the board gave us the authority to do so. So what we would have to do is, um, as soon as we receive the action from the board. We would submit our claims from the past five years to TRS. So we would upload that information. My team and and Dr. King's team worked together on that. We submit the letter of intent to TRS before the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five deadline. And then, as I mentioned earlier, TRS's board votes in the spring, around about April on their premiums. And it's at that point in time that we'll know exactly what our risk stabilization fee would be. So those, those are the next steps to submit the letter of intent. Submit our claims data so that the risk stabilization fee can be calculated. And then we would officially be out of the insurance business and we would hand that back over to TRS. And um that would begin for the twenty-six, twenty-seven plan year. So when our employees would go in for open enrollment in May, June. They would be going through the TRS active care system.
Uh, does the, do TR, do they share their risk stabilization formula? Publicly or is it proprietary?
Now, how they calculate it.
How they calculate it.
I'm, I have not seen anything about their calculation. We can ask. Because all they've told us is ten to forty percent of the premium. Now, how they determine where we fall between ten to forty, I can ask.
I'd like to see what all they include in that calculation, because it'll give us a better.
And just to follow up to that, if we sign this letter of intent, does that preclude us from going somewhere else? If we were to happen to find some magic plan that's better than TRS?
I honestly don't believe the magic plan exists because when I tell you we have looked high and low and under every stone to try to find ways to lower our cost. Um, there's, there are a few different mechanisms where there's the fully funded plan, but by the time you get that fully funded plan. You're still looking at what we're looking at right now, which is increasing our premiums to our employees by forty or fifty percent or we're taking losses again. The one good thing that I can say that I think is really good, and I'll go back to my comment earlier about employees wanting lower premiums. If we have taken these sorts of hits, we should be able to carve out a decent amount of funds to make an. A larger contribution to the premiums and still come out much better than we have been in the past. And so instead of paying this amount of money, instead we would be.
I'd also like to see when we do that in the future that we look at. Who they are, like our paraprofessionals, you know, based on.
We do that now. And so, and we have been told multiple times that we are very much ahead of the curve. Because the board voted in twenty fifteen, sixteen during that budget and our employees already have a tiered. We pay more for employees that make less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year than we pay a a little bit. So it goes twenty-five thousand, then twenty-five to fifty and then over fifty. So we we contribute more the less our employees make.
So just to be clear, I know with a hundred and ten percent that there's not gonna be anything better between now and December. But us signing this, does, does, does it lock us in basically? If we sign this letter of intent with TRS, we can't back out of it if by some chance we find something that just was better.
I don't believe so. Once, once we, I believe that locks us in.
Part of your question, Trustee Correa, was about just what other optimizations can we do with the medical plan? When we were looking at the changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five plan year, which we had five million dollars less in losses. To get below that, when we were working with Gallagher, it will cause pain to our employees. It, because we have a more restrictive plan. Restricting medications. And right, and so we don't want to pass, we had those conversations, we don't want to cause pain to our employees when they're seeking healthcare.
I guess the reason, I'm kind of coming back to Trustee Adams' comment about making the right choice. Definitely, I'm on board with not going self-funded anymore. But what I'm afraid of is sometime between now and December, the state comes out and decides to do something different, like oops, well, you've already signed those TRS deals. And now you can't participate. So that was the reason for my question.
That's a good question, but hopefully that won't occur. So you need a vote?
Uh, not necessarily tonight. Next Tuesday is is uh. Great. And so technically you could have until December because we just have to submit the letter of intent by December thirty-first. The reason we like November is because it allows us to, as soon as we submit our letter of intent. They will open up the portal for us to begin submitting our data.
So can we go ahead and 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 do the vote on Tuesday, but can we not put it on consent? So you all can do your research, get more comfortable with it, and then we'll have another discussion before we vote. Is that acceptable to the body? All right, let's. Schedule it for a vote on next Tuesday, but not on consent. You can continue, Ms. Westbrook.
And so our next item is the first budget review for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. And I want to say thank you very much to the board for your patience and we did submit a draft to you all in the packet that came out on Friday. As our team, your copy may still be a little warm because we were incorporating the reorg, the leveling. House Bill two, changes to the tax rate and all of those things to try to get this first version as close to where we think. It needs to be at this point in the year based on what we know. And so you have a purple, well, my folder's purple. You have a, you have a blue folder that has the first budget review in there. And even though we worked tirelessly up until the last minute, we still have a typo that just in full transparency and. Just sheer humanity, I'm gonna point it out to you, so it'll save you from pointing it out to me. So if you're ready, we'll get started on um. The first page. And so the way the the budget reviews work is we go through each one of our fund types. And we talk about the changes in both revenues and expenditures and what we anticipate the resulting fund balance to be. And so I'll start with the general fund. And with general fund, if you recall, we adopted our budget based on current law. We did not incorporate the revenues or the associated expenditures related to House Bill two because things were still moving. As we were finalizing our budget. And so the first, um, the first item that you see, the numbers are are rather large. And so it's an increase of sixteen point five million dollars. And that is made up of fourteen million dollars, which is an increase to state aid. That accounts for the revenue associated with House Bill two. And it also is utilizing our current average daily attendance based on our current student enrollment. Which we know is considerably lower than our um projected student enrollment. And of course, it also adjusts for our current special populations. Now, at this point in the year, we've only completed the first six weeks. So this information is based on first six weeks data. And we still have moving parts. Snapshot was just this past Friday. So I have taken, as always, the more conservative approach to adding state aid. Right now, the decrease in our enrollment based on where we projected our revenue to be is about six point five million dollars. Below where we projected it to be because our enrollment is down by eleven hundred. Um, there's an increase of three million dollars to adjust for TRS on behalf. And recall, TRS on behalf is that accounting entry that we do. So as our, our salaries are going up, we're having to adjust that calculation as well. So that has an offset on the expenditure side. Based on the calculation of our tax revenues. And and this, just like the state aid, is is subject to change and move between this budget review and the next budget review. As you know, uh, hopefully everyone has voted since the polls are closed. Um, the hundred and forty thousand dollar homestead exemption was on the ballot today. And so that impacts the way that we calculate both our tax revenue and our state aid. Because we're being held harmless on the state aid side. Because we're having a loss of revenue on the the local side. And so that calculation gets very spicy at the beginning until we get our controllers. It's called the T-two value that we're always waiting on. So that's estimated. And until we confirm that number up and we know exactly what it is, that shift between state and local. Kind of moves around until we know exactly what it is. So you may see another pretty decent size adjustment. On the second budget review, but it'll be at that point as as the picture becomes more clear. And of course, that's all assuming that the homestead exemption passes um tonight. Then the last item we have is an increase of a hundred and thirty point eight thousand dollars to just miscellaneous accounts. We had some donations. The police department has LEOs funds that come in and then miscellaneous receipts, um, including insurance recovery. So on the expenditure side, we had a net increase of eighteen point five million dollars. And so the largest portion of that is the staff raises that were provided as a result of House Bill two. And also the equity adjustments that were made to the compensation manual uh for the administrative instructional. We refer to it as the AI two. Some equity adjustments were made um in that category. There's an increase, the offsetting increase to TRS on behalf of three million. A decrease of two point seven million dollars to salary budgets and that's related to the staffing guidelines for leveling. So we have our staffing guidelines that say at elementary, we have a certain student teacher ratio. At middle school, we have a certain teacher ratio. And based on our actual enrollment on the fifteenth day of school, we adjust our staffing. And so that's what you see here is that decrease in FTEs. Now, we work hand in hand with our human resources team and with our our school leadership team as well. And so we go through each and every campus and we look at projected enrollment versus actual enrollment on the fifteenth day. And we make those adjustments. More often than not, we're closing vacancies. Or we're moving staff from one campus to another because this campus has lower enrollment, but another camp. Because this campus has lower enrollment, but another campus has higher enrollment, so we're able to slide that teacher over to a vacancy at another campus. But all in all, the changes related to that um resulted in two point seven million dollars decrease. To the the staffing budgets. There was an increase of one point two million dollars, just under one point two for re-appropriated prior year encumbrances. So an encumbrance is when we have an obligation to a vendor, we issue a purchase order and then we pay off that purchase order. At the end of the fiscal year, if that purchase order is not fully expended, it lapses and then we roll it forward to the next year. Just because our fiscal year ends doesn't mean we don't have to pay the vendor, so we roll that purchase order forward. And then we reappropriate in budget for those those purchases. We had an increase of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the principals on special assignment. Position elevation for our tier three campuses. There's also an increase of just under four hundred thousand dollars for the achieve incentive program. Which our board committed a portion of our fund balance to pay for this, so I'm budgeting it here because it wasn't a part of the budget, it was. Actually committed in fund balance to come out of fund balance, so we're putting the budget here now that we've actually incurred that expenditure. And those employees received their achieve incentive on the October tenth payroll. There's an increase of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we're providing some additional funds to our three comprehensive high schools. To assist with tutorial services. There was and then the offsetting increase to those expenditure accounts of just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were providing funds to Spring High School for the IB program. Um the use of the Leo's funds, use of the donations uh that we received, so it's the expenditure side of those. And so with the changes in revenue and expenditures and appropriations in the general fund, here comes that typo I told you about. The fun, the total fund balance, which is calculated correctly on page one of the document, but is listed incorrectly here. Is eighty six million four hundred and seventy five thousand eighty four dollars. And the unassigned portion of the fund balance, that's the other typo, is sixty five million eight hundred and seventy seven. Six seventy five, so we will get those two numbers updated on the letter, as I mentioned, the calculation is correct within the document, it's just. Incorrect on the letter, we'll get those updated in the version that's in your packet on Tuesday. In the child nutrition fund, we had no changes in revenues, but we did have an increase of two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Um for the re-appropriated encumbrances in child nutrition's fund and that leaves them with a total fund balance of fourteen point two million. In the debt service fund, we actually had quite a bit of activity in debt service and capital projects because we had the. Um the sale of our bonds, the twenty twenty five bonds and also we had a refunding. Which made it the largest transaction I've ever done before, which was um with the refunding coupled with the the new money, it was a little over six hundred million. So that's why you'll see some pretty large numbers coming up here. The first part, though, that changed in debt service was the tax revenue. So when we originally posted our tax rate and calculated our budget. We had the the interest and sinking tax rate at forty four cents. But when we did our transaction, we were able to use capitalized interest, which is basically when you do a bond transaction. When you have a new money transaction, we're able to use bond proceeds to start paying the interest on our bonds and we were able to use our premium. To do that, so we're we were able to push um some savings back to our taxpayers by utilizing the capitalized interest. And so that actually allowed us to decrease our tax rate from forty four to forty two cents. So the tax rate that the board approved was forty two cents on the INS side. And so that's why you're seeing a decrease in the tax revenue that we'll bring in because we're able to um. Push that savings to our taxpayers for this one year, trustee Corret, do you have a question?
Did, wasn't there some legislation that was being tossed around about changing that and not uh? No longer allowing the districts to use the capitalized interest?
We used our premium to do it, so I I think we're good, working with our financial advisors and our legal counsel, we were able to do it, so. Yes, I do recall what you're talking about, but it did fail. Okay, then there was an increase to appropriations related to the bond issuance cost of two point one million dollars. And the net, the other financing sources, the premium, the net proceeds from the sale of the bonds was the twenty seven point nine million. And that leaves a total fund balance in debt service of a hundred and sixty six million, as you know, our debt costs are going up. So we're we're gonna see um our our payments go up over the next few years as now we've issued that full amount of that authorized. Eight hundred and fifty million dollar bond. In special revenue, there was an increase to revenues of five point four million and an increase to appropriations of five point five million. And those are all the granting changes with Title One, Title Two, all of the the special revenue funds that we have. In capital projects, there was an increase of nineteen point one million to revenues for interest earnings on bond proceeds. And there was a net increase of five hundred and fifty point six million, those those are those really large numbers and appropriations. And an increase of five hundred and thirty five million and other financial sources and again, that is related to. We sold the remaining authorized bonds um that we had, that which was five hundred and thirty two million and then of course the associated premium. And costs, so those are the capital projects. And then lastly, with the staffing adjustments, we had a total net decrease in positions of twenty nine point five. And of course, that has a lot to do with the fact that we've done leveling. Um I know one of the burning questions that the board had for us was the cost of the reorganization. And so you don't see an increase here in the first budget review. Because as I mentioned, Dr. Quay, I made it very clear that we were to get this cost as close to zero as possible. And so through our efforts of just looking high and low um and some unexpected changes that happened. We were able to reduce the net cost to general fund down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I do have, I don't know if it's okay, if it's appropriate to hand it out, but I do have. A a bit of a breakdown of how we got to that, but and we didn't add it to the budget because we're still. Being charged with going back and finding another one or two additional positions that are vacant that we can close to bring that. One hundred and fifty thousand down to zero, so that's the the net cost right now of um. The the reorganization cost and so I I jokingly said we've had some unexpected changes, but. Um our my chief, Timmy Left over here, so we're closing that position, the associated executive assistant position. Then we have another executive assistant position that was tied to an elimination of an assistant superintendent position that we're closing. And then we're also closing the CCMR coordinator position and I know that's like a gas because we know how important CCMR is. But Dr. Guillory actually brought that savings forward to us because. We have established such an amazing team that is working towards CCMR. We also hired several chiefs that have a lot of experience and and a lot of our new team have come in with CCMR experience. And we think the team that we have assembled can get the work done and actually bring in another position in could throw off the work. That we've that we've got underway, so I did receive Dr. Guillory's blessing, it was her idea to put it on here, I don't want anybody to throw anything at me. Because we are still laser focused on CCMR, but the closure of that position as well helped us get that. Reorganization net cost down quite a bit, so I'm almost there, Dr. Quayor?
That was a lot. Trustee Hodges?
Okay, I have a couple of questions and I was trying to get it right because this is different than the pages I have on my um. Email, so the first question, I, okay, as it relates to the HR department. I noticed, I think it was on page eighteen. That the HR department is budgeted for thirty eight point five five positions. And so. That's an increase of one position from our current adopted budget, correct? And correct me if I'm if I'm processing this incorrectly, so and then the budget on page six shows. Its appropriation is increasing by over two hundred and fifty five thousand. Five point five million.
And so remember that the raises were not in the first version of the adopted budget, so we're also adding raises, so that's not that. They got an increase in the position, there was a correction to a position that already existed, there was an HR assistant position. That was not on their um table and so there was a correction of one. But the increase that you see on HR is associated with the raises, not adding a position.
Okay, so my, thank you, thank you for that uh clarifying it, so. This makes HR one of the, I think this is probably one of our largest central administrative departments, is that correct? Uh uh correct assumption? Um and I was just thinking with the significant, as you stated in the notes, the decline. By eleven hundred students. Have we done an efficiency audit for HR?
And so I would say, um trustee Hodges, would we're all together, but other departments are spread out on this list. Right, so you see HR as one unit, but finance is spread out uh to the tax office, to procurement, technology. And so we you see us together, but so because we're not one of the largest uh. Uh departments in the in the district and central office.
That's an excellent point because they are, we are, like my team, for example, thank you for using me as an example, Dr. King. That our team is broken out in different cost centers and so, yes, that that's a good point.
Okay, so. Again, my question is, have we looked at possibly realigning some of the those? The positions in HR, I know we have, that had been brought up before.
We have in the past and we we are um. When we did the TASBO study two years ago during the the budget reductions, uh I can tell you, we are a lean group, uh we've not increased staff. Uh we uh encompass a lot of traditional HR functions along with non-traditional HR functions and also when you have a. A thirty percent teacher turnover rate, uh and we're replacing the number of staff that we are. Um that some the these positions are critical, but we're always open to it, but we did this. Uh two years ago when TASBO and TASB uh came in uh to do the staffing review.
Okay, um Dr. Quayor, Dr. Harris and myself just returned from an amazing uh budget session in Austin. And one of the the things that the company offers, similar to what we did when we did the TASB study, is that they would take. Because what you saw during the budget process is where we were and then we did all of the closures. But I don't think what you've seen since then is us benchmarked with our current staffing. And so I think that is something that we'll bring back during this year's budget session to see where our departments are now. After that TASB work has been done and after that those studies and we closed the position, so then you can see us benchmarked. Again, across the state of Texas, I get what I get where you're asking and I think that's very critical, so you can see, here's where we were. We did those budget reductions, now here's where we are and how do we compare with our peers? Yes, so we will bring that back during the the budget process.
Okay, and I I was looking at the uh line item for special education, I think it was on page uh your page eight and seventeen. So we have about forty seven point five million and a staffing increase of twelve positions, is that correct?
For special education moves every day, we're and if you see large increases anywhere, it'll be in special education.
Which is um while I'm noting that increase, I guess um my question is. How does do these allocations ensure we're adequately funding the recruitment and retention of. Fully certified sped teachers?
I'll hand that off to Dr. King and I know Dr. LeBron's in the audience as well.
And so could you repeat the question for me, trustee Hodges?
I was asking, how does this allocation ensure we're adequately funding the recruitment and retention of fully certified sped teachers? And qualified paraprofessionals to make sure that we are in compliance with art and accommodations for sped.
Which allocation, the allocation for sped staff?
Yeah, the allocations, the allocations for those uh twelve positions and then it looks like we have forty seven point five million. Dollars allocated for sped.
Right, and so tho- those those dollars are for student facing, right, and so the. The staffing allocation is based on student needs and so as IEPs are written and art committees are held and different needs arise. This uh sped staff reaches out to uh our finance team and to our HR team to request additional staffing. But as far as the dollars there that you see there, those are student facing dollars and not for HR, we have a recruitment budget in HR. Of about ten thousand dollars and so uh we use that uh for for our recruitment initiatives.
Okay, alright, thank you for clarifying that for me and then I. I just have two more questions, I was looking at the.
And and to add additionally, we do provide stipends for the majority of our um special ed positions, you know, ranging from our. Our case or ECSE, so the majority of our positions, even inclusion, we do offer stipends, you know, also as an incentive. Um to make sure that we do, we are staffing with high qualified teachers. We can put that in the board report as well, a detailed breakdown of each stipend we offer for for every category of employee. And we did, that's a great part point, Dr. Quay, we did add stipends this year for special, we added stipends for uh resource teachers, did not perceive this. Previously receive stipends, uh uh transition teachers didn't and so. We are, we did add in this year's compensation plan additional stipends for special education teachers that weren't previously receiving stipends.
Good, okay, alright, um I was looking at the athletic revenue, um so my third question is. I don't remember what, my pages are mixed up now, on my thing it was page sixty seven at first, but um. It shows that the projected uh revenue from athletic receipts is four hundred and four four hundred and thirty four thousand. And that's in the general fund, is there a reason why that money? I guess, could you just kind and uh Chief Westbrook's explain the financial rationale for placing this revenue? In the general fund rather than directly putting it back into athletics, I'm sure there's a reason for that.
Yes, because athletics actually cost closer to five million dollars to operate. And so that four hundred thousand dollars that we get from gate revenue just offsets the five million that the district is paying. So. We, it it helps offset the cost of operating athletics. As opposed to paying five million and then giving an additional four hundred thousand on top back to athletics. If I understand your question correctly, you're asking, why don't we just give them the money that they generate?
Right, yeah, and well, I guess, I I don't know, have we thought about maybe looking at some sort of um. Self-sustaining model that could kind of help offset some of those program costs? Well, and I guess what I what I'm thinking about is from an equity standpoint, if. Football is generating X amount of revenue, but then you're putting that money in the general fund. How are they, I guess I I don't understand, so how is that? Spread, like how does that work, so? Say, for example, if athletics needs something and it does, it comes out of the general fund or is it in there?
Athletics budget is a line item like all all the other departments. And so if they need something, they take it out of their general fund budget. Now athletics, unlike several other departments, they do get the use of the Planet Ford money that comes in every year and that was. Um established when we first opened Planet Ford, so they get seventy five thousand dollars a year and those funds are given back to. To um the athletics department and they use it for reinvestments at the stadium and different things like that. Also, any revenue that they bring in from ads, that would come back to athletics as well.
So the seventy five K from the Planet Ford sponsorship, where is that, which line item is that in?
It's actually a local grant and the reason we allow them to put it in as like a local grant is so that it can cross fiscal year lines. Because for us, if we were to put it in their general fund at the end of the fiscal year, it would lapse, but we allow them to use that fund across. Fiscal years by by allowing it to be in a local fund. A local revenue fund.
So if they, if it was in the other, if it was a line item and they didn't use it, they would lose it?
It would lapse, yes ma'am, at the end of each year.
Alrighty, thank you.
I have one question, jumping back to um sped. Um, Dr. King, you mentioned the uh recruitment dollars for special education. Do we have um the numbers of special education certified teachers who are not placed? In sped classrooms, like they're certified, but they're in other positions?
Right, I can pull that data for you and get your board update, yes.
Um, I know you've explained this already, um, Miss Westbrook's, but. Um, and I, I've gone back and forth with you on this as well, TK, um. We have right now, how many uh current unfilled vacancies? The last report I had shows two hundred and eight, but that's as of October third.
It's on the dashboard.
Is it on?
It's on the dashboard. It's two something, you're right.
Yeah, and so we are uh currently, yes, at October third, we're still running the data for November. Uh, so the latest data is October third, we had two hundred and eight unfilled vacancies, but a hundred and forty-five of those were covered by an interim teacher.
Right, which, okay, so I, I'm still fuzzy on this, and this is the part that I think you've explained to me. The distinction between these unfilled vacancies and budgeted vacancies. That we sort of account for in terms of FDEs, and I just need to.
We, we budget for vacancies, so we don't budget a hundred percent of the cost of staffing. Because we know, unfortunately, sorry, HR, we're not going to be a hundred percent staff. And so by doing that, that allows us to put those dollars back into the pot. So that we can use them for, we can use it for something else. So we're budgeting at ninety-two point five percent with our campuses. So we assume a seven and a half percent of our staff is, is going to be vacant at some point throughout the year. Anything that comes in, so say, for example, we're at ten percent vacancies. Well, that delta, that is a true savings, and you're going to see that when we come to the end of the year. And we're doing the annual financial report, and we budgeted for thirteen million dollars in the deficit. And I come in and I say, well, we only had a three million dollar deficit. The difference is because we had more unfilled positions than we budgeted for. So we do account for some, but there are times when our, our actual vacancies are higher than what we budgeted. Our vacancies to be, so I say that to say that just because we have a vacancy doesn't mean, oh, here's, you know. A hundred percent of the cost of that vacancy, we can just reallocate to something else, because we anticipated those vacancies. And we didn't budget for them, so it's, it's, it's already accounted for in the budget. But do we have more vacancies than what we budget for? Yes, we do. And, and that money gets added back into the fund balance. No, they're there all throughout the year, and so we see it when we're doing our, our analysis throughout the year. We see those vacancies.
I didn't hear your question.
He says, is there a timing accounting entry in when we're able to utilize the savings? And to my example, the ten percent versus seven and a half percent. Now, kinda to that point, is ten versus seven and a half is assuming that that position was vacant all year long. And usually that's not the case, they're vacant at different points throughout the year. And I think where, where you're going with that is, is there a way to utilize some of that savings? To incentivize our teachers. And so I think what we would need to do is figure out what that would look like, what's the plan, what do we want to do? And then we can cost it out and compare that to maybe the previous years budgeted vacancies versus actual vacancies. And see what that looks like. But it does help, it does help us, because it does help with financial operations as a whole.
And, and trustee Adams, my team is actually more awesome than I thought, because I didn't look at November, because I didn't think they had the numbers in there, but they have updated. It's not due to me till Friday, but they have, we, we're down to two hundred and six. But it's, it's a stat, it's, the number's always changing, like, for example, we had six hundred and forty-seven vacancies on October third. We are up to six sixty, six hundred and sixty-six right now. So as we're filling, we're also having people resign, so it's not a number that's staying the same. And so people are, so to go to what Deputy Superintendent Westbrook was talking about, it's a, a position might be. It's not that it's vacant all year, and it, it could be partial, because like I said, we're still having people leave. But we're down to, uh, I know, uh, my colleague doesn't like me to get these numbers down, but we're down to two hundred and six. We have a hundred and forty-eight covered, and so we're down to fifty-eight without coverage. Um, because the interim come, interim salary comes out of that vacancy expense. And so, I mean, that vacancy, those vacancy dollars.
But that, the, the, the vacancy number isn't impacted by the lower student enrollment?
We closed positions, yes, we, 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 we've closed fifty-three positions.
And that was that savings of the two point seven million.
Because of the lower.
Yes.
Those are my questions, y'all.
Okay, I'm getting there, I'll, I'll get there, thank you.
So, uh, speaking about the, um, the enrollment, where is in the budget are we? Uh, where, and I may have missed it, but is there a line item on resources? And how we're allocating money to try and uh increase that recruitment? Or to, to recruit our students and basically to get them back? Like, do we have, where, where are those funds allocated?
I think those funds are in different places, um, one, I know previously was in the communications budget, now under the chief of staff budget. Um, where they have a, they have a sizable portion that is dedicated just to strategic comms. A lot of that is around recruitment, um, a lot of that is around um advertisement. Um, so I know all that is packaged, it's historically come from the communications budget. If we're talking about also billboards, um, you know, billboard rentals will come from the communications budget. So in terms of that piece for kids, um, the majority of that would be on the chief of staff side. Um, but also there's other budgets as well, we have the school leadership office that will do a lot of that internally and how they support schools. Curriculum office also helps support, so I, if I was to pull out three offices where it can be shepherded from, it's going to be from those three. But mainly from the communications office.
Okay, and one other question, have we, um, as it relates to our eleven hundred students, I know we had an event a couple of weeks ago. But have we physically made any phone calls uh into those parents to see? Uh, why they, the kids are not in school? Do we have that information, or how's that?
Yes, campuses, you know, are calling, um, they're doing a lot of door-to-door, and I know our campuses have also been having in-house events too, to try to attract. Um, or attract Matt families, but um, I think responses vary. Um, and, you know, um, it, it, I think it varies from, um, like for one instance, I remember a family at Ikenro. Um, one was because the campus they were going to was a K eight, and, you know, she had three children. Um, one was in eighth grade, one was in fifth grade, one was in first grade, she all wanted them to be all on the same campus. Um, customer service. Um, the, the, you know, the, the total family experience, um, it could also range also to academic achievement. We always talk about the system of great schools and, you know, um, the mission and vision around ensuring a high quality seat for every single child. Um, so I, I, I think those decisions do range from a myriad of things. Um, I, I truly do believe that our schools have been working so, so very hard on this initiative. Um, and I, I, I do believe we're primed, you know, to really make some headway, especially moving into next school year. After accountability time, um, to get these families back.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so my question, I've lost half my questions with the conversation. The um eleven hundred student decrease, has the leveling we've done with regards to that? Is this twenty-nine point five positions, correct?
Yes, that's the net, yes.
We, we've closed fifty-three, but we have added some, some campuses needed, some additional staff as well.
Right, and so the, the net overall is right at thirty positions.
Yes.
Okay, um, I know we had a conversation earlier around efficiency studies. And, uh, Miss Westbrook, you made a comment around a conference that you and um, Miss Harris attended. And I missed part of that.
Yes, and so do, we, it was an entire budget conference. And so one of the discussions was about agile budgeting. And so they discussed, you know, benchmarking yourself against other districts. And so we talked about the fact that here in spring, we had done that. So we got the study from Tasby, we closed positions, but what the board has not seen is where we are now. After we've closed those positions, now how do we compare across the state? And that's what we need to bring back, which would help to, towards uh trustee Hodges' question.
Right, because my ask was going to be around efficiency study, but that may be more efficient than actually doing an efficiency study. Okay, so do we have a timeline on that?
We just found out last week that we were doing it, so I can bring together a timeline, it would be during the budget process. Is there an ideal time for you to see that?
No, that's, that's fine.
Maybe around February, March?
Yeah, okay. I don't want to wait till, I don't want another nightmare budget cycle. I want us to do budgeting year round, um, so that we aren't pulling our hair out and having twelve meetings in a month, you know? Um, so the more we can get ahead of the data on where we are. Um, the less we have to do when it's time to make those decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Correa? Uh, eh, everyone kind of answered or asked some of the questions that I had, but there were, I went back to our June meeting. And there was some commentary about refined revenue estimate, state comp ed. And waiting until the fall so that we could figure out kind of what our neighboring districts were doing. Senate Bill Four, we were talking about the homestead election, I was trying to remember what, what that statement was applying to. About the neighboring districts and what the numbers I think that we were waiting on, I don't know if you remember.
So in terms of Senate Bill Four, tho- tho- that's what I was talking about with the election today, yes. Because there was the homestead exemption, and then there was the disability over sixty-five increase, and so both of those were on the ballot today.
The hundred forty thousand and the sixty thousand?
Yes, mm-hmm, so those all impact our state aid and our local taxes. And ideally, if we lose it on the local side, we gain it on the state side. That calculation just isn't that smooth, and so it takes a little while even for us to make sure that everything is, is correct. But also sometimes there's unintended consequences with that calculation, and some things with frozen levy gets lost in the shuffle. And so there's been adjustments at the state level to make sure that we're really getting dollar for dollar. So that's what I meant by the adjustments with Senate Bill Four. Um, now as far as seeing what other districts were doing, that might have been related to salaries. Because early on, no one was talking about their salaries.
We were talking about salaries, yeah, and we were, we were talking about waiting until after, you know, the fall, basically, to kind of see what the neighbor. What our neighbors were going to do, because we were talking about stipends and compensation, that sort of thing.
And a lot of districts did what HB two told them to do. I haven't really heard of, and Dr. King may know a little bit more from his, his surrounding districts. But I haven't really heard of too many people that went too far beyond what HB two said we needed to do.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for all the engagement, are you, am I okay to move to the next item?
I'm almost feeling like everybody needs a break, because this is going a lot longer than we had, um, y'all need a break? Uh, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Gonna go ahead and reconvene, and Ms. Westbrook, you can continue.
Thank you, Madam President. Our next item begins on page eighty-seven. And this is the monthly financial update. That is our actual expenditure, so we were just talking about the budget, but this is actual. And this report is shared with the board along with an analysis each month in the board update. So I just ask if there are any questions on this report?
It's kind of a general question and it, it kind of ties into what we had last talked about on the, the budget review. Have we ever, have we considered a need for revising the timelines on when we're doing some of the compensation? Or, or is it just the timelines are so rigid that we kind of just have to follow that flow?
Which, which compensation?
Just any, any of the, um, and again, it's just kind of a general question. Is the timing that we're currently using really the right timing for us? And I don't know if, you know, the hiring decisions, I know it falls into the certain time of year because of the contracts and, and then of course our fiscal year plays into that as well. So I didn't know if, if that's something that we've ever looked at considering changing or if we even need to.
Like the timing of raises, when we get raises?
Yeah, just the timing, even the timing when we're sitting down talking about that part of the process.
Yes, right. You, you have something.
Well, see, if you remember this last budget season, we approved the comp manual before we approved the budget, for that reason, right? And so we're, we're always, and so I think the board was proactive in that, uh, this last season. And that actually helped us in recruitment before the penalty-free resignation date. And so, uh, and then I think that's a strategy that, uh, we're, we're gonna try to continue.
And it's a lot easier to do in non-legislative years, yes, because we have all the data we need.
Mm-hmm.
August is only the second year of the fiscal year, or excuse me, the second month of the fiscal year, so you don't see a lot of activity happening on the monthly report. But as I mentioned, you'll continue to see this report with analysis each, um, each month in the board update.
I did have one question about the SHARs.
Yes.
Or did we pay all that back? Are we still dealing with that?
We're still dealing with that. There are some districts that are deciding to opt out of SHARs altogether. That's a hard decision to make, because as long as we're bringing in any money that offsets, um, the cost, then it's still to our benefit. But we're, long gone are the days when we're getting five to seven million dollars. Now, I feel like they're sending us more bills than they are payments. So it, that, that's an evolution that we're just gonna have to continue to pay attention to and adjust. But as you can see on here, there's nothing, we hadn't received anything, yes. Okay, our next, our next item is on page ninety-one. And it is our monthly report of grants that are over ten thousand dollars. There's one on here that is recurring that you all are extremely accustomed to seeing, and that's our Twenty First Century Community Learning. But we have a new grant that's on here, and this is related to the phone-free schools. And we were awarded a grant of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And the last I heard, our plan was to utilize the storage. Um, we were, use those funds to, there's a storing, I'm probably using the wrong term. Pouch, thank you, that's a good word. I'm like the storing thing, but yes, so that was the intent. Mm-hmm.
You're not referring to the Yonder Pouches, are you?
That's probably it, the Yonder.
Academic friends. This says locker units.
Yonder is an actual brand, so I think that we're talking about just a pouch.
A pouch, some, some place to put the phones during the day, yes. Have.
I just wanna clarify, because that's different, uh, locker unit versus the pouches. And then I just also wonder which campuses. This will be for like, is this tailored to high schools? How much would that cover? If we know yet.
Dr. Tingle, I was wondering if you were still here. Dr. Tingle actually wrote the grant. Come on up and talk this through. Thank you, sir. I know.
Thank you.
All right, there we go. Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Quay, our Board of Trustees. Uh, as Ms. Westbrook stated, we recently received this grant. And so we're actually now looking for, uh, different vendors to fulfill that obligation. So the thought is, is that we have a storage locker, uh, in each of the campuses. And based on the quotes that we get, we will then know how many lockers we can afford to then divvy it out to that certain amount of campuses. Obviously, secondary, since we have the most cellphone use, uh, will be first prioritized. We may be able to drop it down to more campuses based on the vendor. So we're in the process of getting quotes, and Dr. Love just recently spoke to me about that. And so I'm on the process of getting some quotes. Once we get them, we'll use that amount of money that we got and then we'll divvy it out across the campuses. So we've not committed to any company as of yet. We got the grant, we know how much it is, and we're getting the quotes right now.
And that's information we can share updates on as we get those quotes and make decisions on which campuses.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
I'm just assuming the way you said it, when we get the lockers, we're not talking a locker per school. We're talking about in the classrooms, right?
It could be a locker per school. So for example, like if, if their students are, uh, getting in trouble with cellphones or they're breaking the policy, just a place for them to store them within the school. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the idea is not for all the students to, to lock a, yeah, okay.
That is correct.
That was gonna be my question too.
That is correct.
Yeah.
We're a housing area.
For those that are struggling.
That confiscate.
We need millions for that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the clip, okay.
Okay.
Right.
We're good. Thank you, Dr. Tingle.
Oh, boy, I forgot to also mention as well, Dr. Tingle is our newly named Executive Director of Innovation Student Support Services. So we're glad to have him in that role. He's been here and he's staying here. Thank you for all your hard work, Dr. Tingle.
And why would he leave?
Okay, and, am I okay to proceed?
You're okay to proceed, okay.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
I do have one more, just about the Twenty First Century, that's something at the Building Bridges, um, session that we have a lot of questions about, can we get Twenty First Century or more campuses? Um, and I rec- recognize that it's a grant from TEA. Um, is it possible, does it have to be funded through TEA? And then can we request additional funding for more campuses?
Well, this specific grant, yes. Uh, it's a very prescribed after-school model. However, to your question, is, um, that does not inhibit any of our campuses to create their own after-school program. Um, and it's gonna, it's gonna be some strategic, you know, um, budget allocation to how we do that, who we designate as a provider, um, and what our focus is going to be. Um, tutorials, project-based learning, clubs, at, uh, sports. Um, y- you're thinking what I'm thinking. If, if I had a choice, I would love to see this in all campuses. Um, and right now we've had, we have ten campuses. The grant is a running grant, so we do have it at, um, I think it's in the cycle of every seven years? I, I believe so. So, um, so every seven years, then we, then we, seven or five, don't quote me on it, it's five. Uh, so five years. Um, so then we will reapply for the application. Um, I, I, one of the things I know, I was just having a conversation with Dr. Harris about weeks ago, um, was with the next application cycle, what would that look like for us to potentially span out to more of our middles? Because right now it's at seven elementaries and three middles. Um, and I would love to see this and keep expanding it, especially in our middle campuses, so, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, oh, Dr. Quay, when we talk about, uh, since Dr., uh, Ms. McDaniel brought it up, trustee McDaniel, one of the things that I learned from Building Bridges is all that Twenty First Century entails. And there were things that I was not aware of, so I don't know. It just goes back to us having a comprehensive marketing and communications plan, uh, be, so that we can, you know, get the message out about some of the things that we have, uh, going on, particularly with that program. So that's just food for thought.
Received, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Westbrook. Highly anticipated final item is on page one oh nine. And it is the Procurement Services Report of Vendor Purchases Over One Hundred Thousand Dollars. And the actual list is on page one-ten. Okay, so those are the grants, this is the. If there are no questions, Madam President, that was my last item.
No questions from any of you all on page one-ten? Okay, this is a new way we're reporting this. So everybody's happy and good, right? All right, thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Does she already cover this? It's aggregated report, we need to vote on it, right?
Oh, yes, we did ask to have a vote on it, yes. And it's because we don't, we want to get in the habit of voting on that, so it saves us a week of lead time. Yes, thank you, President Durant.
Okay, so do you have an ask of the board?
Yes, Madam President, we're seeking the board's approval to approve the vendor purchases that are listed on page one-ten that are over a hundred thousand dollars.
Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approved the report of aggregate purchases greater than one hundred thousand dollars processed during the period referenced in the report.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee McDaniel to approve the aggregated, um, vendor purchases for over a hundred thousand dollars. Is there any discussion?
Yep, I got one question.
Okay, two questions, and trustee Correa?
How often do we, like, we see police vehicles. I was trying to ask. We see police vehicles on here quite often. And I know I, I had asked the question at one point, you said that those vehicles tend to wear out. But is there, I don't know, it just kind of feels like almost every other meeting, we've got new vehicles showing up on here, so.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Just clarify.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Your turn.
Uh, good evening, Superintendent, President Durant, Board Trustees. So, uh, vehicles were purchased in twenty-twenty-three via the bond, and the vehicles that were purchased here were the only vehicles we've purchased since. Uh, they were multiple, there, there hasn't been a vehicle purchased since that twenty-two bond purchase that was approved, and there were nineteen vehicles. Uh, when we brought on the nineteen vehicles, we downed eighteen vehicles that were way past their life expectancy, were way, way overdue. And so, uh, standard is that you're replacing slowly but surely, so you don't get such a depleted fleet. And we had a, we had a wreck three years ago, there went one vehicle that was totaled. I mean, it was just, uh, it, it's just.
There went one vehicle that was totaled, I mean, it was just a, it, it's just part of the process, but no, it's been uh two years. Since we've had any vehicle purchases.
I guess time flies when you're having fun.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm having a blast, thank you.
What's the life expectancy, or, or how often are, I guess, are you budgeting to purchase new vehicles?
So uh with, when you purchase so many vehicles like, like that at once, um unfortunately, they all came in new. But they're gonna, eventually at one time, they'll probably start phasing out about the same time, so it'd be another very large purchase for the budget. So uh what we'd like to see is every couple of years, adding a couple in there, because they are constantly being used twenty-four seven. Um again, you have things that come up, driving vehicles twenty-four hours a day, they're gonna get tore up, they're gonna get wrecked. Uh that's just part of the, the, the business unfortunately. Uh optimally, uh hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand miles for a police service vehicle would, would be the standard, I would say. With our Vehicle Services Department that, that takes care of our vehicles. Uh I've seen some go longer, but I've, unfortunately, I've seen some go, go uh lower too.
If you don't mind, I can add to that. Could I add to that? We have a fleet department that manages all the vehicles, including police department, we have a matrix that has several different categories. It takes into account things like accidents, mileage, use of the vehicle. So there's a huge matrix, that's what we used when we were going through the bond program to determine which vehicles needed to be replaced. The police department's in a category by itself because of the nature of those vehicles, the stop-start in the, they're really driven hard. So those vehicles are actually on a shorter timeframe than like some of our white fleet vehicles. That, that don't get the same, you know, rough use that the police vehicles do. Um so we monitor that and we tier out um in our fleet department, all of the vehicles, and we know when those need to be replaced. Some of the new ones that Chief was gonna mention as well is because we're ramping up for HB, I think it's HB three compliance. Um at our campuses, and so as we added more officers and we had to add additional um uh supervisory staff. We had to get vehicles for them as well.
So one of the things that I, that I, cuz you, you kinda brought up a good point. We're, we don't have to buy them as often, but we're buying them in a large amount, uh you know, la- a large amount at a time. So have we considered maybe, it would be an additional cost for the first few years? But staggering out the purchases so that as they wear out, they're wearing out and not all nineteen at the same time. So now we're having to buy, you know, another nineteen.
Yes, ma'am, as we head into next year's budget preparation, I just, I'm definitely gonna be talking about that with Ms. Westbrook's. So we can kind of come up with a more concrete plan for that, and other agencies I've been with, that has been the, the case. Uh uh walked in here and the bond was already set for the nineteen vehicles, we love them, we're using them, they're, they're working out, working out wonderful. But we don't want to have to hit such a large purchase at, at one time, little bits at a time.
So that may answer my question, because I, I thought they were being purchased with bond money, but it's just showing up under general fund.
Yes, ma'am. They were in the budget last year that went through.
Okay, so what I'm gonna assume is we bought nineteen when we had bond money and we could get those. But we do have a matrix, a formula we use ongoing, and as those age out, they come from the general fund.
Well, but also, as we're getting ready, as we're gearing up with HB three, we're adding officers. And so when we're adding those officers, that we're adding the car that goes along with the officer. As, because HB three says that we have to have one resource. And as we're gearing up to get to that, we're phasing it in, and so every time we add one of those officers, we're adding the vehicle. That's included in that cost, that's in the budget.
See, that wasn't talked about when we got that unfunded mandate, was it? The impact to the vehicles, but I'm just trying to clarify why we see it sometimes as bond purchases, and these are general fund.
And that's why, those are the ones that are tied to the HB three positions that we're adding.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Alright, um our next items include our monthly.
Madam President, there's a motion on the floor.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously, thank you, Ms. Westbrook and Chief. Our next item uh includes our monthly reoccurring items as previously discussed. Uh these items were provided for us in advance, at this time, do we have any questions? Hearing none, the Board of Trustees will recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two. Five five one dot zero seven four, and five five one dot zero seven six. Now voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in the open session. The time is now nine twenty-one P M. Hour and twenty minutes.
We will now reconvene the open meeting of the board of trustees. The time is now eleven thirty-three P M. Are there any motions?
President Durant, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to authorize and issue a school district teaching permit to Ashley Felix for automotive technology, a non-core academic C T E course.
Second. It's a motion on the floor by trustee McDaniel, seconded by trustee Correa. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move to immediately terminate the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six probationary employment contract of Avante Smith for good cause as discussed in executive session. I further move to authorize the superintendent or his designated to provide the employee and S Beck with written notice of this board's actions in accordance with district policy and applicable law.
Second. Motion on the floor made by trustee Adams and seconded by Dr. Jensen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the immediate termination of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six term contract of Carlos Garcia Carrillo for good cause as discussed in executive session. And I further move to authorize the superintendent or his designated to provide the employee with written notice of his board's actions in accordance with district policy and applicable law.
Motion on the floor made by Dr. Jensen and seconded by trustee Adams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other motions?
Madam President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the immediate termination of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six term contract of Brandon Lewis for good cause as discussed in executive session. I further move to authorize the superintendent or his designated to provide the employee with written notice of this board's actions in accordance with district policy and applicable law.
Second. We have a motion on the floor made by We have a motion on the floor made by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to rescind and withdraw its prior action to propose immediate termination of the 2025-2026 Chapter 21 Probationary Employment Contract of Lily Smith. And I further move to authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee and aspect of this board's actions. I also move to authorize the administration to pursue joint dismissal of TEA calls number 010-LH-09-2025.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor made by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Adams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board ratify the superintendent's action to hire the following individuals pursuant to the board's prior delegation of hiring authority. Dr. Social Rodriguez, Chief of Transformation.
Second. There's a motion on the floor made by trustee Correa and seconded by trustee Newhouse. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Dr. Rodriguez. Welcome aboard. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Second.
So motion on the floor made by trustee Correa and seconded by trustee Newhouse to adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. We adjourn tonight's meeting at 11:38 p.m. Thank you everybody. A lot later than we anticipated.